So I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Southborough School Committee, open meeting, Thursday, September 9th, 2021, time is 6:32 PM. And we have full attendance of the Southborough School Committee. I will just simply mention that the reading of the kind of the government, the governor's statement has been, the requirement for reading it has been eliminated, so I will not read it. First item we have on the agenda, unless I've missed something, would be audience sharing. And let me just see. I do not, I see several attendees in the audience. I do not see anyone with a hand up. So that said, let's move to new business. I'll kind of pass the, pass the torch back to you, Greg. And I think the first thing on that item is school reopening updates.
Sure. Thank you, Roger. So I'm thrilled this evening to share with the community and the committee that we had an outstanding opening. I think back to one year ago today, and we weren't even in school yet, and we were involved in 10 days of professional development, and then students were in a hybrid mode. So I think the consistency having the students in our classroom in person, they, the energy is outstanding in our classrooms and in our schools. And this evening, each of the directors will give a brief update. And then we'll hear from our principals, and then we will answer any questions. So we'll start with directors, and then however, we will conclude with Keith giving an update on transportation. And then lastly, Mary Ellen will give an update on health and wellness and the COVID-19 update. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Stephanie to provide an update.
Thank you, Greg. And so I am going to highlight the Summer Acceleration Academy for my update and just explain a little bit about what that was. And it was a great success. So we hosted a Summer Acceleration Academy the week of August 9th. This was highly defined by the state. There was an entitlement grant, meaning that we were told exactly how much money we would receive if we applied for it. So we applied for the grant, and then it specified exactly what the academy was to look like. The goal was to provide an academic experience to a small number of students in a specific discipline with half day, a week of half day sessions. So we had grade one and grade two focused on literacy. So those are students who are entering grade one or entering grade two. Grades three, four, and eight were focused on mathematics. In all cases, we had very small teacher to student ratios. Sometimes groups were as small as six students with a teacher. The very largest groups would have been 10 or 11 students to a teacher. And in addition to the mathematics, they also had a STEM special. So once a day, they went to a specialist for the, this was for the first to fourth graders, where they did a STEM activity that bridged across the, the week. The eighth graders were together with eighth graders from Northborough and with 10th graders from Algonquin. We combined those programs and they met at the high school. Whereas the first through fourth graders met at Woodward School. And thank you to Steve Mucci and the Woodward faculty for hosting us there and to Algonquin for hosting us at the high school. We had 44 students in first through fourth grade and four students in eighth grade. It was much harder to recruit our secondary students for our summer experience. And I'll just finish up by thanking our teachers who participated. We had a fantastic roster of teachers who supported the students in this program. And then our site coordinators, Nicole Bolos and Kelly Schweppenhauser, who were both teachers at NEARI, worked together as site coordinators for the elementary programs for both Northborough and Southborough, although they are both Southborough teachers, and did a fantastic job. And Eileen Falconi, who is a teacher at the high school, led the secondary program that included eighth through to eighth and 10th graders. So a huge thank you to the site coordinators and all the teachers who participated. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'd like to just acknowledge Stephanie and her hard work. The grant came out very late in June. And it took a tremendous effort to get it up and running and getting all the pieces in place. And she did an outside outstanding job organizing that. So thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Greg.
All right. Next, we have our Director of Student Support Services, Marie Allen. And she also had an extraordinary summer with extended school year and was quite busy. So, Marie.
Yes. Yes, we were. And as you're all aware, for Student Support Services in our district, our school year doesn't end in June, and we get a second beginning with students in our extended school year program. All students were in person for our Southborough ESY students. And we welcomed them into two of our buildings at FIN and Algonquin. And we kept them safe with COVID protocols in place. We did full testing, thanks to Mary Ellen and her, and her hard work. And they continued their academic and social learning. We offered 10 programs and walk-in services across 20 classrooms to students pre-K through grade eight. And that was for 85 students in Southborough who were offered ESY services, and 57 of them were in attendance. And for comparison, our total ESY programming was offered to 265 students with 187 in attendance pre-K through age 22. I want to thank Keith Lavoy, our custodial staff, and Mary Ellen Duggan, and Principal Ryan and Principal Bevan at both FIN and Algonquin for their attention to detail. The schools were great. They were opened beautifully and clean, and our students and staff really enjoyed the summer program. And not to mention their flexibility during the summer months and getting that program up and running. And a special thanks goes out to our ESY coordinator again this year, Helene Desjardins, who did a masterful job in scheduling and coordinating all of our programs to include the challenges with staffing and finding substitute teachers. It was an unprecedented year as far as finding staff, and many of us also subbed into our classrooms and did some teaching. Deb, you, Kate Clark, and I were stationed at both building locations, and that for the purposes of supporting our staff and to answer any questions of the day. Things went pretty smoothly as a result. As far as the beginning of the school year, we visited all of our schools, the first couple of days of school, and found teachers and students very busily engaged in activities to start the school year. So wonderful start so far, as was evident from our visits, and our teams again are energized and prepared to start the new school year. Happy to answer any questions as well.
All right. Thank you. So Kim?
Yeah, sorry, I can't, sorry. Louie, I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about the struggles with finding staff and sort of the need for services come this fall.
Yes. So we did have some challenges. We were able to fill most of our teaching slots and had, as I said, Deb and I and Kate did a little bit of teaching ourselves. But we did have some struggles with our related service providers and finding, we did fill most of the speech and language position, service delivery positions for ESY as well as OT, some PT, but we do have compensatory services that need to be given to parents, to children, and parents will be made aware of that for the number of compensatory service sessions for each of those disciplines in the next couple of weeks. The parents were already notified that they, their children were due compensatory services in the last week of the summer program. So parents have already been notified that they are going to be receiving compensatory services. It's the exact number that we will be giving them in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome. Thank you.
This is Kamali. Marie, you talked about the program was being held at Algonquin mostly. And I'm just curious about the, was transportation provided for those students or it's optional? And were there any key lessons kind of learned out of that?
Transportation was offered to everyone. So we had the yellow buses running as well as van transportation. So there were some parents who opted out of it and because they wanted to deliver their students personally, but everybody who wanted transportation did get it.
Okay. And then a second question I have is, I, I not, I didn't catch all of the numbers. I saw, I heard 57 out of 85, and then there was another percentage that you gave, but for the ones that opt out of taking the offer to attend, do they, is there a general theme as to why?
Sometimes they just want to give their children a break over the summer, and they prefer to, to vacation and, and have their children attend camps and not come to ESY. So it's really not a mandate. We offer it at IEP team meetings for those who qualify. And it's really up to the parents whether or not they want to take advantage of that or not.
Okay.
All right. If there are no further questions, we will move on to Rhoda Webb, who's the Director of English Learners and Equity. So Rhoda.
Good evening. May I show some slides? All right. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. So I just wanted to show you a few images of our summer program for English learners that took place in August. And this is just before school starts. For our middle school and high school students, there were three weeks starting the week of August 9, and that is Monday through Thursday, just nine to 12. And then from incoming first graders to fifth graders is the week of August 16 and the week of August 23rd. So this year, we focus being very mindful that students have been, you know, going through the pandemic, the last year and a half. Our program always focuses on enriching a student's English language proficiency. And of course, to reconnect with each other, make friends across schools, because we joined Northborough and Southborough and Algonquin, and we hosted the program at Z School this year. So we, the focus of the program was STEM challenges to develop the language of math and science in all the students who were able to attend, but also building confidence, risk-taking, curiosity, and perseverance. So we, in the planning, mindfully planned for using and applying math while interacting and building every day, they had a different project to, and challenge. And definitely, risk-taking was a huge part of this, so that students could, were encouraged to make mistakes and redesign what they were doing and try to improve on, on their projects. Persevering was a big part of this, teamwork, collaboration. And of course, building their confidence, especially after many trials at being successful at their attempts. And the students came back with a smile every day. They were happy to be there. They were happy to be with each other. And the best part, of course, was listening to what they were telling their parents. We surveyed the parents in different languages at the end, and these were some of the comments of what the children told their parents. I want to thank Lonnie Soder for being the onsite coordinator, Sandy Bunsick for leading the curriculum and bringing all teachers together. The collaboration among the teachers was spectacular as every year. And the best part was really seeing the children. Of course, we were following protocols, but the nicest part was to, to then be able to, to meet our families in person. So we, it was a very successful summer, and we ended right before school started again.
Questions? I see Kim got her hand up.
I literally cannot figure out how to raise my hand, but thank you. Rhoda, that was awesome. And I'm wondering how many kids participated this summer? How many students?
Thank you. I forgot to say that. So there were 23 students from Southborough participated for a total of 62 students in our program.
And how do they, do you have, like, do you have that, the number like Marie had, like, how many kids are offered the program?
No, I do not have those numbers.
Do you typically have, like, high participation?
We, in the last couple of years, it's been in the 60s, even upper 60s. So to have actually 62 families come, some, there were families who were on vacation and couldn't come. And so we know the reasons why families, and they usually language proficiency levels, you know, one through three that are invited to the program.
That was great. Thanks for those photos.
You're welcome.
Jan?
I guess my question is for the three people who've already spoken about their programs, it's great, it's exciting to see some of the things that happened over the summer. And I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit about, I assume all the COVID protocols and things like that were followed that we do for the school year. If you could speak to, you know, what were we seeing in terms of COVID rates, quarantining staff and kids and stuff like that? You might not have exact numbers. I'm just curious how that went.
Mary Ellen?
I can answer that. We had no cases through the summer, for any of the summer programs of staff or students.
Wow.
Kind of reflective of what was going on in our communities through the summer too.
Mary Ellen, did you do testing over all the programs?
We did offer testing through the summer. We did offer for ESY. We did not offer it to the EL program. I guess that was probably my bad that we didn't offer it to them, but we did offer it through ESY for the whole seven weeks.
Kamali?
I'm so impressed at just the EL program. I guess one of the questions that I had with that program specifically was how, what, what is the age range? And you noted, Rhoda, that it's the language proficiency that's used as the criteria, if you're in a one through three range. But is that, and I know there was middle schoolers there, but is it basically K through middle school? Could you, what's the?
Yes, it's incoming first graders through eighth grade, but of course, middle, and then high school, right? High school is also invited. And just like Stephanie said, the middle school and high school levels, the students have a lot more going on. But, but that's, that's how we, and in fact, I mean, families that know we hold this program or have been reclassified, reach out to us to see if they can come, but we really want to keep our groups small so that we can focus on. There was a lot of interaction and a lot of conversation to be able to develop the language of the children.
Okay. So would it be fair to say that, you know, as you see a family kind of register for school or start to inquire about coming to Southborough Schools, and they identify themselves as English as a second language, you know, or being on that scale? You can't, you, that's when we start to already kind of line them up for this program? Because you could, you can move here from country X and in eighth grade, ninth grade, 12th grade, or third grade. And so any of those ranges, you would invite them to something like this? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Other questions? Okay.
Sorry, Roger, one more. How do we pay, how, how are we paying for this EL program? Maybe that's a Becky question.
No, well. It's paid fully out of our Title III program, sorry, Title III grant, which is a federal grant that needs to be used exclusively for English learners in a supplemental way. And so more than half the grant pays for our summer program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Rhoda, Rhoda is the author of that grant each summer or each year, does an excellent job expending those funds for English learners. All right, we're going to shift gears and move to our principals. And just a reminder, after our principals present, we're going to have Keith give a presentation, a presentation on transportation, and then Mary Ellen will speak about COVID-19 and mitigation protocols. So we'll start with Mr. Principal Ryan.
Thank you, Greg. I'd like to start by thanking our Facilities Department, headed by Assistant Superintendent Lavoy and Brian Fantoni. And a big thank you to our Head Custodian, Khalid Baba, and Second Shift Custodian, David Traviano, and all the other custodians and students who are part of our summer cleaning crew. Khalid, David, and the crew did an outstanding job reconfiguring classrooms with furniture for our new classroom structures and had our school shining and bright just in time for our annual open house in the first day of school. And speaking of our open house, we were very thrilled to be able to invite families and students into our building to tour our classrooms in our school this year. It made a big difference from years past. We, as mentioned previously in previous years, believe that having this experience prior to the first day of school, where students get to meet their teachers, parents get to see their classroom setup, really reduces anxiety and contributes to a much smoother start of the school year for our students and our families. We did have the opportunity to do this in a staggered manner, meaning that we had half of one class arrive from 2:30 to 3:00, and then the other half arriving for the other half hour. This helped with us in minimizing the number of people in each space. And it also helped our teachers and our staff connect with students and families in a much more personalized manner. And this was really important, given the, the absence between our staff and parents and students over the past year plus. Our staff took part in two days of professional development prior to the open house. During the first day, we were treated by our FIN SOS chaired by Nia Benoit to a pizza and salad luncheon for the entire staff. Thank you, Nia. Thank you, FIN SOS. That was a great way to start our, our school year. And in the area of PD, we spent a significant amount of time this year on the early literacy screening initiative, which was headed up by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Reinhorn, and what we'd be using to adhere to the Massachusetts required dys, dys, dyslexia screening guidelines. We also spent a lot of time focusing on our own mental health and recognizing what impacted pandemic and what we, what we had for structures did for us in terms of our own personal journey and, and professional journey and our, and our students' mental health. We recognized that our students, though, very excited to be back in the building, were still very anxious to be in the building, many of whom who've never been in school before. So we spent a lot of time around strategies and approaches to minimize stress and reduce anxiety. You know, emphasizing to our students and to families that our, our classrooms are safe spaces. And even though we're operating a little bit differently with masks, they're still, they're still safe for them and that they feel secure. We kind of promoted the phrase Maslow before blooms, meaning that we wanted to make sure that our students' basic needs were met before we dived into, to official learning. And also like to thank Kristin Peterson for heading up the FIN family farm this year over the summer. Couture knows how much that we can generate from, from that from years past. But we have, we had families scheduled to care for and harvest the vegetables. And as the tradition is, to drop them off at the food pantry, and we still have quite a bounty of peppers, tomatoes, and kale. So we're still looking to donate. They'll probably use that in our FIN cafeteria during this next month. And lastly, I, I have to give credit to the entire FIN school staff. It's a remarkable, remarkable group of people, and I sincerely thank them for their positive attitude, their resilience, and their strength over the past year in starting this school year with a positive attitude in a, a full spirit. So we're off to a smooth start, and we're very excited about having our students in person. And I think there was only one crier on the first day of school, and, and that was the parent. So we're off to a good start.
All right. Thank you, Clayton. And next we'll shift to Woodward Principal, Principal Steve Mucci.
Thank you. And Clayton, I think.
I'm sorry. I see Jen has her hand up. Did you have something for Clayton?
Yeah, so I can wait till the end if you like, but I, I'll just ask it now. I was wanting, you know, we've heard from at least from one parent who had concerns about the mental health impact of mask wearing on very young kids. So I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit, and I know you have a background too also in mental health, and what you've observed from at least this first week in terms of how kids are doing with wearing masks.
Yeah. Great question. I would say, and this goes back to when we first were required to wear masks, that our youngest students do a much better job wearing them consistently over the course of the day. Sometimes asking to take a mask break or allowing them to remove them, they, they don't do it. It's not a problem for us. There are some students who are, I would say, maybe hypersensitive to tactile issues and require frequent mask changes. But I think overall, especially when I'm thinking about preschool, in our youngest, more, most challenged learners, they're, they're fine with it. They really are. I, I, it's not an issue. They come in with masks that are personalized to them, promoting superheroes or whatever, and we do a, I think we do a fabulous job of modeling that it's required and then allowing them to take breaks when they need to. So we have not seen any negative impact, nor have we had any associative concerns around the risk of it or voting them. I mean by that is when it first came out, there was a lot of education by us to our students around what this was, right? And why we needed to do that. Students are not asking those questions. We are still talking about why we need to wear masks and why it's required, but we, we aren't seeing anything negative around adhering to the mask guidelines.
Thank you.
Okay.
Steve Mucci.
Thank you. And I'll start by just apologizing that there will be some redundancies, as I want to highlight a lot of the same things that Principal Ryan had highlighted. Overall, we've had a great start to the school year. And as Greg mentioned, there's definitely a level of energy that's palpable in the school. It's quite contagious, and it's a much different start to the school year this year as opposed to last year. But I just would want to start by thanking Ed Mercer and Joe Mancini, who are two custodians for really preparing the building, especially Brian Fantoni and Keith Lavoy for their organization and oversight of the whole building cleaning, making sure that the facility was ready to accept students on the first day. With Southborough Recreation holding summer camp at Woodward, there wasn't a whole lot of time to put the final touches on, on the building, but they got the job done. They did a fantastic job. and the building looks absolutely amazing. We were able to honor Ed Mercer's retirement with an SOS sponsored luncheon on our first day back. Thank you to SOS. They put on a great, a great welcome back for all staff. With Ed's retirement, we welcome Chris Chardier, who is our new head custodian. Chris was also a large part of the success and getting the building ready for the final days and ready for students on the first day. To continue with introductions, we have quite a few new staff joining us this year. Carrie Capel is our new speech and language pathologist. Jen Glynn has assumed a new role as a second grade teacher at Woodward School. We also have several new ESPs joining our staff this year. Maureen Falzone, Jessica Berthume, Erin Burnett, Jessica Goldsmith, Jessica Mancini and Kara Santola. And several of those employees were coming to us from different buildings and our Woodward staff welcomed them with, with open arms and they've really been a great fit so far. This year, as Clayton mentioned, maybe more than any other, we recognize the importance of connecting with our students and building that sense of community early on. So to support that work in our opening faculty meeting, we explored the district theme of the power of connections and shared ways we connect with students during the first days and weeks of school. And we all came away with different or fresh ideas to try with students, myself included. You know, I was able to learn a lot from, from teachers who are working with students every day and gave me ideas of ways I can connect with students. On Tuesday, August 31st, we held our open house. We had a great turnout. Student staff and parents were excited to be back in the building and starting the year together. We had about 240 out of 271 students in attendance, which is about 88% of our student body. So thankful to parents for bringing them to the event and for meeting the teachers and seeing the building. And really, you know, creating that sense of community, which we've had at Woodward over the years, but last year it was a little harder to foster. This morning, I hosted my first principal coffee of the year centered around volunteerism and the work of the SOS Parent Organization. As I mentioned, connecting with students and families is a priority for us this year. We had a great turnout with about 26 parents attending. And overall, students and families are excited with the shift towards a more typical school experience. Of course, recognizing that certain safety measures and mitigation efforts still need to be in place, but we're, we're moving in the right direction. And lastly, I would just want to recognize the entire Woodward faculty and staff for a great opening. When posed with challenges, all staff stepped up to do what's best for kids, putting in long hours and late nights, really making sure that we were off to a great start. So I just want to say, you know, how proud of my staff and how thankful I am for their efforts. And that's about it.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Mucci? All right. Next, we'll move on to Kathleen Valente, Principal of Neri School.
Thank you. I may repeat a few things as well, as we want to recognize all our great staff that helped us to open this year. So excellent work on the behalf of our custodians, especially Mike Dayville and Claudio de Silva, Keith Lavoy and Brian Fantoni, and also our three Neri, four Neri students who returned to help us out this year. It was great having them back in the building and they really did a terrific job. Kudos to our teaching staff for the incredible preparedness, working collaboratively to get the classrooms ready, supplies all put together and welcoming students on the first day. It was just, it's so nice to have everyone back in our building and it was a great opening first day. We're utilizing our outdoor learning spaces again this year. We have our Neri courtyard and our back garden and that, those are being used when it's not raining, but those are active places for us at Neri. As a staff, we launched the year with Drew Dudley's Lollipop Moments video and the importance of making connections and having a positive impact on our students and each other. And I've asked staff to share those moments and within Week One, Greg Wallach randomly received this wonderful email from a former student that demonstrated the impact he had on him. The student is now a freshman at George Washington University, majoring in political science and international affairs and aims to go, his goal is to go to law school. But he said he remembered the three branches of government and watching the Schoolhouse Rock video from Greg's class and just his passion for US history and government and how it ignited a passion within him. And he said, had he been in a different fifth grade classroom with a different teacher, it's entirely possible that he would be in a different school and major. And he just wanted to let Greg know the impact that he had on him and to thank him. So it was really nice and connecting, nice to those lollipop moments. And if you're wondering, the student's name was Gavin Weinberg. Not a former student of mine, but a former student before my time. We welcomed some new teachers as well as ESPs. Our new world language teacher, Esther Valverde, who arrives from Spain just the week before school started and jumped right in. So it was exciting to welcome her into our learning community. We have a new instruction specialist, Ian Hall. Three new ESPs, Vina Gopal, Heather O'Toole and Jill Baker. A new dining room manager, Felicia Votter. And today, we welcomed a new mid-shift custodian who will be shared between Trotter and Neri. And his name is David Austin. So we're excited about that. Our Neri family is growing. We have one new baby on the way, one of our teachers, and four new grandchildren arriving in the, one in October and three in the spring. So we continue to grow. I want to thank the SOS for coming in and distributing our supply kits. And they also provided a wonderful luncheon on the first day. Our open house was a huge success and parents were just thrilled to be back in our school, able to go into students, their children's classrooms and meet the teachers and specialists. It was, it was just a great turnout. We continue to use all spaces that are available to us to ensure safe, adequate distancing. We use our Zen Den, our quiet corner and our outside spaces, as I had mentioned before. We're continuing to use our Red Cat Lightspeed voice amplification systems in each of the classrooms, which is very helpful when we're wearing our masks. We have an upcoming principal's coffee next week that we hope to have a lot of attendance at. That's where we'll be talking about volunteerism at Neri. And we continue to share out as much as we can through our communication, our backpacks, our website. We have a Neri community newsletter, Facebook and Twitter, and it's just great to be able to share out all the exciting things that are happening at Neri. And finally, we are looking forward to creating a new student count, a school council. We only have one returning parent, so we're looking to gather some interest in that. And it's an exciting year because we're going to be launching our new SIP coming up in October. So it's going to be a terrific year.
Thank you. I see Kim's hand up. Oh, you got it. You figured it out.
I did. I totally figured it out. Kathleen, I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the world language. That's new this year for Neri, right? And like, what, who does it, how they do it?
Yeah, it's, it is brand new for Neri this year. We have, so Esther Valverde is our teacher from Spain, as I mentioned. We were able to hire her through the consulate of Spain. So it was an exciting process and it's, it's quite a process that they go through to be able to come and teach in the United States. So she is here for the year with us. And so we're building the program. And it's a, it's a flex program, Kim. It's, so it's a foreign language exploratory program. And it's aimed at giving students the foundation of foreign language study. So, so for our program at Neri, we're focusing on world cultures for the first third of the year. The second third, we will focus on Spain and Spanish-speaking countries and cultures, music, art, food, celebrations. And then the last third of the year will be on French and French-speaking countries. And what's great about this, well, there's many things that are great about it, but what's wonderful about it is it's exposure for our students, which really complements the programs at Trotter. Not, not so much focused on language acquisition, but exposing them to, to like the alphabet and colors and, and identifying things around desk and table, things such as that, everyday vocabulary, and really exposing them, going deeper into the cultures of those two countries so that when they do get to Trotter, they have some background knowledge. So we're super excited about it. Each of the fourth and fifth grade classrooms, they're receiving the same curriculum because our fifth graders have not received it prior to this year. So yeah, she's, she's doing a terrific job and the students are just loving it.
Will you continue on? Will fourth and fifth graders, like every year? Or will you switch to just one year after?
So Kim, can I just, I think what might work well is if we have a formal presentation on the program, maybe a doc meeting.
Awesome. Okay.
And share your details about.
It's great. Yes. Okay.
Happy to share.
Jen?
This was just a small comment about that. It was, it's exciting to hear about this new program and having followed it through like the updates for the previous years. And it's one of the things that my daughter was talking a lot about this week. So she was very excited about it and it was just, it's, it's a great program and I'm excited for her to continue in it. So thank you.
That's great feedback. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
So Kathleen, Kathleen, we want to, we want a detailed report the next couple of months about the amazing program.
All right.
All right. So next we have Principal Trotter Middle School, Gary Herschuck, and Assistant Principal Stacy Mahoney.
Thank you, Greg. I would echo the sentiments that Greg mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that the summer did feel very different than last summer, although we still have a lot of work to do. I think bringing students back from, you know, April to June really prepared us for this year. The number one question I was asked over the summer is will students have lockers? And they do. So I was happy to provide that. So that was on everyone's mind. I will mention that our facilities team did a wonderful job shifting and pivoting, led by Keith Lavoy, Brian Fantoni, Patrick Powers, Dan Morrison, Nick Aliff and Chris Banks. The building looks great and anything we needed at last, even at the last minute, they were able to respond accordingly. Like the other principals mentioned, we onboarded several new staff, which I think, what I'd like to recognize right now, Ms. Jen Devlin is now shift, a longtime classroom teacher at Trotter, is assuming the role of the technology integration specialist. Ms. Katie Danelle, who served as an ESP in our sixth grade team last year, is now our part-time health teacher. We have onboarded two new counselor, adjustment counselors. Ms. Kelsey Rondo, who was a long-term, a long-term sub counselor last year and is now a full-time counselor this year, and Katie Saroni. In our science department, Brody Kramer will be serving as a long-term sub, I mean, for science. And Gail Rochello will be serving the, on the eighth grade team, teaching science. In social studies, Ted Painter will be joining our seventh grade team as well. For student support services, Alicia Day is returning as our castle teacher, shifting the role from castle teacher to our neck partnership classroom to Allison Hassy. It's great to have a lot of continuity in these two, for these two programs. And we've also onboarded several new ESPs this year. John Place, Maury Purcell and Leah Starr will be working in our castle program. And Kim McCoyn will be working in our sixth grade with our sixth grade team. Amanda Puzzle and Calvin Hemmerberger will be joining our seventh grade team. So we're very excited about the new teaching staff in our cafeteria. Lee, Lee Rondo will be joining our cafeteria team. And as Kathleen just mentioned, we just met David Austin today, who'll be joining our facilities team. So very exciting. In regards to our professional development on the opening, opening day, Stacy and I had the staff look at an article, "School Will Never Go Back to Normal. Here's Which Change for Students Forever." And really the crux of the article was that the past year and a half has been a disruptive movement for schools that there are so many discoveries, realizations and innovation. Public education will never be the same. We're never going back fully to the old ways. So with that as the foundation, we asked our staff to reflect on the past year and a half. And we gave them some essential questions, how they have changed as an educator. What are some of the practices as a school we need to keep? What are some instructional practices that they want to keep? And what are some things that we, we should abandon? Stacy and I were very impressed with the reflective nature of the staff and saw a lot of high leverage patterns and trends. You know, our staff mentioned as an educator, they've just become more open-minded. They're becoming more compassionate. Their awareness about student mental health has grown tremendously. I was really impressed that, you know, teachers recognize that they, they feel more comfortable now with taking risks and in trial and error in their practice than ever before. Instructional practices, they want to keep their embracing canvas, outdoor learning opportunities, improve clarity. They recognize that last year, their coherence and clarity with their, their instruction, instructional delivery was key. Many teachers are rethinking their homework philosophy. They also want to have a balance of online and offline learning and have deadline flexibility. As a school, you know, I think collectively, I think we've always done this, but it really emphasized meeting students where they are in the learning process. You know, using more outdoor time and folk and just becoming more student-centered. So that was a wonderful experience and we're going to share that back out with our staff. On that first day, we also hosted our sixth graders for our step up hour. Traditionally, we do this in the spring. We welcomed them back where I think we had about 120 sixth graders attend. They were able to get a crash course in Canvas, take a tour of the building and ask a series of questions to our seventh grade ambassadors. So it was a well-received, it was a nice beginning for many of our students. One of the great things that many of the principals mentioned is just kind of a return to some traditions that all the schools have embraced and students and families have expected. Historically at Trotter, we kind of dip our toe in the water with our first two days tradition. And we were not able to do that last year, but we brought many elements back this year. I was proud to see three eighth grade students volunteer to give opening day speeches, which they recorded in advance. The theme of connection ran through each one of their speeches as well. Students then engage in a rotation of study skills, technology expectations, field activities in our community building exercise. They also, we also brought back our reading program where students get to choose from a list of about 30 novels of various genres. They're grouped sixth, seventh and eighth grade through sixth, seventh and eighth graders. And faculty members lead a reading discussion on the second day of school. For our community building theme, Mrs. Mahoney chose to support our strategic plan, our school improvement plan by focusing on the theme of windows and mirrors. In this community building exercise, she used Grace Lynn's book, Ugly Vegetables, to kind of demonstrate the theory, the theme of windows and mirrors. Students were also broke out into smaller groups and did an identity chart. This is a great stepping stone for a lot of the work that we're going to do later on this year. In regards to our reopening, our schedule looks and feels very similar to years past. We have three-minute passing time and we've also brought back a recess in the morning, which allows students to have a mask break collectively outside and a morning snack. Our sixth graders who eat lunch around 12:15, we recognize the need to bring this back as well. And last but not least, we just hosted a Canvas bootcamp for parents the other night, led by Mrs. Devlin. This was really important. We learned a lot from the experience last year, knowing that Canvas is kind of such a hub of information and a kind of an anchor and insights for families and the classroom experience. And that was well attended and well received. So, and like many principals, we're excited to start the year again.
Questions for Gary? I have a, a general question. I wanted to wait until the principals had finished their presentations. I guess my topic is related to teachers. Certainly cannot, cannot overestimate their importance. So my question is about staffing. Certainly with the advent of COVID, there have been challenges in acquiring and retaining staff. And whether or not this is a question that you would maybe be taking, Greg, or you'd want to have someone else, Heather or someone else, take, feel free. Take, feel free, have, have the staffing challenges, you know, related to. Again, acquiring and retaining the excellent staff that we have. Have you seen those challenges increase, decrease about the same? And if so, kind of what, you know, what, what issues do you face, you know, in trying to maintain this?
We'll have our resident expert, Heather Richards, our executive director of human resources, field that question.
Thank you. So education is no different than other industries as far as. As far as increased turnover and increased hiring. So we are seeing some turnover and I'm going to speak to some specifics and turnover in the personnel report later on. But I would say that with recruiting, there's, there has been more recruiting happening this year than in prior years. And we certainly have had to cast a much wider net. It's like fishing, right? You have to. Basically fish the ocean in order to get the, the fish that you want. And I know that's a terrible analogy, but I think that the recruitment and. Hiring process has been much more of a challenge this year than in any prior year.
And I have no doubt about that. Katara, I see your hand up.
Are you all set on that, Roger? I just, I have a totally different comment.
Well, I am.
Can I just make, can I add a few notes to Heather's commentary too?
Please, this is such, this is such an important topic, please.
So I think that just to add to Heather's comments that one of the advantages we have. For the public schools of Southborough is we have an outstanding reputation in the surrounding towns and communities. We also are very competitive in our salaries and we have been for many years. And that has actually helped us hire and recruit. And candidates have options these days. They have choices of school districts. And through our principal's great work and Heather's great work, we've been able to recruit people to our district because of its reputation and its salary and competitive wages.
That's really good to hear. Any more to add? So Katara?
I just wanted to just make an overall comment. Following all of the, the principal presentations, just to say congratulations on such a wonderful and positive opening. I, you know, I was able to go to two of the schools, Woodward and Trotter and they were absolutely gleaming. Woodward in particular, I mean, just, I, it just, the facilities were beautiful. Everybody was so. Pumped and just ready for the year and you could just feel the enthusiasm in the buildings and. I just wanted to say that I just can see how everyone is pulling together and, and I'm, I'm happy also to hear about the. The really reflective professional development and other sessions that have been happening about educator. Mental health and connections and all of that, especially after last year and heading into. What we hope will be a much more normal year. So I just, great job everyone. And thank you so much for the updates.
Other questions? Okay.
Okay, shift to Keith Lavoy who will provide an update on transportation. And some of the custodial projects that happened over the summer.
Yes, thank you, Greg. And I appreciate all the sentiments that the directors and principals shared about our facility staff. I couldn't agree more for the programs that we supported and just the overall preparation of the buildings. It was a very busy, productive summer in that realm. We didn't have any major projects during the course of the summer, but we did focus a lot on the maintenance of the buildings. Which during the pandemic was something that at times took a back burner to keeping up with the cleaning and other duties that they did have. So this summer was an opportunity to kind of reboot on some of those maintenance items. And certainly Brian Fantoni was at the, the cornerstone of that and making sure that it was happening across the board. So a great deal of appreciation to him. The other thing I'll mention, and I think Mary Ellen's going to follow up on it as well, is that our HVAC systems. Were, were checked and reviewed and making sure that they were good to go for the start. And it is a carryover of last year to make sure that this is the type of maintenance that our equipment is requiring. And we are in good standing for the start of the year where we ended last year with. And I think that's just going to be one of those lessons learned from COVID and an ongoing part of our routine and preventative maintenance that we undertake. Another quick reminder is that our food services program led by Kyle Parsons in our four schools. Just a reminder to parents in the community that meals for students are free. This is something that was extended by the USDA last spring through the entire two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. And we look forward to higher participation as we are full in person. So, so far, so good. I got a report from Kyle today that we are about ten percent up on our numbers for June of last year. If we take just the five-day total. So we are on our fifth day of school and we have seen an increase even though it's only been five days in. So we will continue to report on that between Becky and I on the team. We will keep you posted as that year unfolds. But just as an overall reminder to families that meals are free. Before I dive into transportation, are there any questions about the facility preparation or food services? Yes, Jen?
I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to this idea of maximizing outdoor spaces and also measuring. The ventilation issues in cafeterias.
Yeah, so we have dove right into that with our cafeterias being at three feet of distance. We have taken readings of the CO2 levels and I'm happy to report that it's well within where we would want them to be. For a classroom well under that. Outside air is typically around four hundred parts per million of carbon dioxide. Yes, carbon dioxide. And we have been able to only raise that about a hundred points when the cafeteria is full. So that does tell us that our HVAC systems are performing well to make sure we're getting the necessary air changes to keep those levels low. So, so far, so good in that. And that will be continued to be monitored throughout the fall.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Keith, the only thing I would add is the, all classrooms are outfitted with tapewild filters.
Oh, that's right.
Which also increases the air exchange over a period of time.
Yep, that is true. And that is a carryover from last year. That's not in addition. That is, those are mitigation efforts that we had in place for last year as well. Okay, I'll move over to transportation. As everyone is aware, last week we launched the new start time configuration. I want to send a special thank you to Jean Pinto, our transportation and registration assistant. And certainly her partnership with our bus drivers for NRT for designing the routes and using GPS software. As well as the driver's knowledge to, to build these routes so that they were effective. We are also very fortunate to have retained all of our school bus drivers. You may have noticed in the news that there is a bus driver shortage nationwide. Unfortunately, because of that level of retention we've had. All of our buses do have, do have drivers, which I can't say the same for other local districts. But certainly as we launch the initiative, we're really learning, leaning on that partnership to help with the different changes that, that are going to be needed. As we, as we navigate it. New this summer, we provided families with personalized communication about their bus number. Bus stop and anticipated time of arrival and drop off. The feedback was great as families no longer had to search bus routes for the closest stop. This information was given directly to them, which was very helpful. And overall, after day five, we are in a very good position. The overall performance of the bus routes has been better than expected, especially with a brand-new system. The routes overall do work and all the students are accounted for. Now we are working on the timing of those routes, which in a normal year can take a few weeks to settle in. And as each day passes, the adjustments we are making have improved the arrival times to school, which is certainly a priority in the morning. We want to make sure the start of the day starts well. And in fact, today I can report that all buses for Trotter, Nearie, Woodward and Finn. Were on time to school. And now we will be taking the time to tweak those routes and reduce the amount of time that students are on the bus. This was anticipated with our new start time configuration and will be stuff that we continue to explore as it unfolds. And now really what we're beginning is the analyzing phase. The things we are going to look closely at are the arrival times, the ridership of our routes and the lengths of the routes. Are all being part of that review. And we don't want to move into making changes too quickly because we may undo some of the hard work that's been done already. And we don't want to compound a problem by making a change as a reaction versus making sure it's a response that's carefully. And thoughtfully managed. We do appreciate everyone's patience. We know that with any type of change, we need to really instill that patience and people have been outstanding. For students, parents, faculty, administration and bus drivers, we are all navigating this together. And overall, I can say that, that people have been very understanding of what we're enduring together. I just would like to mention that the bus driver shortage is a little bit of an obstacle. Our collaboration with NRT to mitigate the interruption has already been challenged more in Northborough than Southborough. We, this may at times produce delays, but we're going to try to reduce that with some proper planning. And we are trying to be as resourceful as possible to make that happen. And in fact, Becky Pellegrino and I have been in discussions with other districts about how they are trying to mitigate the impact on their, on their districts. And we are hopefully going to see through the efforts of NRT, more bus drivers being brought on board even by the end of this month. Which will hopefully alleviate any strain with any other bus driver shortage that, that we may feel. Certainly the small adjustments to the routes and as everyone knows, we did a ten-minute earlier start, starting this week. Did yield some positive results. We are monitoring this daily and collaborating with NRT to improve the performance of the routes. And certainly responding to parent requests has been an ongoing part of our work. That did begin in early August when we sent out the communication and continues to this day. Some of the requests are very simple and easy and are things that we're able to do without a problem. And some are more complex where we want to be clear and transparent with parents about how challenging the, the change that they're requesting may be. And at times it has not been possible to maintain the integrity of the route. So this is the beginning of a very large change and a very large initiative and we don't take that lightly. But overall, we are feeling a lot of success for the start and we're hoping that that continues. And like I mentioned, through proper analysis and reviewing of data and really getting a full set of data. We might be able to make some changes that improve the overall experience. So, so far, I believe overall, we're off to a good start, but we definitely have areas where we want to improve. Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, I don't know if I, I might, I might have beat Jennifer by seconds. I, I think I may have misunderstood. So. Initially, I thought you said we hadn't lost drivers. And then more recently, you said the bus driver shortage is challenging. So did I misunderstand one of those or are those actually somehow or other both right?
They're, they're both, they're both correct and we're very lucky. Many districts don't even have enough drivers to take care of all of their routes. So all of our routes do have drivers, but if one of those drivers is out sick. We don't have a bank of substitutes that we can go to, to fulfill that route. So we're having to be creative with that. That's the challenge and the burden that we're collaborating with NRT with. So Roger, yes, you're, you're, both are correct.
All right. Thank you. Jen?
I have, I guess it's a two-part question or two questions. So the things that I've heard from parents who are, have concerns about busing at this stage. There are a couple of different things. One is that the buses, I'm hearing that the buses are very crowded. And that's a concern also with, I know that Desi doesn't have any regulations for, I have a number of kids on a bus. But I'm wondering, do we have, you know, given the fact that we changed to a two-tier now, we're packing more kids onto each bus. Is, is there a consideration as part of this discussion around, and I know it's complicated with bus driver shortage, about potentially needing to increase. The number of buses to reduce some of this crowding, if you think crowding is an issue. And then the other piece that I've heard from parents is that their children are on the bus for a lot longer than they were last year. And so I think in some cases, you know, some parents have been saying that, you know, this is over a half an hour extra per day on the bus. And so I'm wondering if, you know, and as we're thinking about changing start time, whether or not that's going to really impact. The amount of extra sleep folks are getting if they're having to be up earlier to get on the bus or if they're on the bus for a long time. So I guess, I guess if you could speak to those two points, that would be helpful. And if we anticipate any that, those pieces smoothing out a little bit.
Sure. I'll, I'll take on the, the capacity question first. Certainly we didn't, well, there's a couple of things. The ridership overall, I think, was higher than, than expected. And that has been a good thing. We want our students to take the bus. We are within the capacity limits of the bus. We don't have any of our buses that are over. It might feel like they're more full before because you're right, we are putting more students on the individual buses. And that is going to be something that we, we do review as part of the ridership data that we're going to be collecting. There's not a, a lot of technology for that. So we all will be relying on the administration and the teachers to help with collecting that data. And it will be part of our analysis. And wherever possible, if we can make an adjustment to even that out better. That's certainly going to be something that we do. Greg, did you want anything out, anything more about the capacity limits at all?
I know, I think that we are monitoring it. And I think part of the data collection that is taking place is allowing us to see what the true ridership is on our buses. Which buses are under expected capacity and can Jean Pinto make some route shifts? But again, I think it's really important to give it time, to give it a few weeks to be able to really have our drivers. Get to know their students and also their routes. Because if we shift too quickly, we're really evaluating routes that bus drivers don't know. And as Keith mentioned, it could cause more problems than one. So we're analyzing it, we're collecting data for the next week and we'll be adjusting routes. In terms of, you know, we have heard from families around the amount of time on buses. So one of the things that we're again, collecting is, you know, the time students are riding on a bus. So when they step on the bus, from when they get picked up to school, what is that ride time? And also when they get dismissed from school, when they step on the bus and they get their ride home, what's that ride time? Right now, what, what we were experiencing is that some of the, we had a few buses arriving to our schools to pick up kids late. So there was the time that they were waiting at school for a bus and then added to that the time they were on the bus. And that exceeded more time than we had hoped. And again, our focus right now is making sure our buses get to schools on time. So that there is not a delay from when school is dismissed, kids get on the bus and are on the bus for the appropriate amount of time. So it's, you know, again, we're collecting data and we'll have more information for the community, but also making some improvements over the next week or two. In terms of, I'm not sure if there's any other questions about ridership or capacity.
Can I just ask a follow-up to this? When, when you're doing the analysis later on of ridership, will you be also looking? Cause I've heard from quite a few parents who are now driving their children to school. So they're taking them off the bus, I think precisely because they think they're either on the bus too early or there's too many kids. So will you be also taking that into account when you do your?
Yeah, I think it's something that we'll consider. I will share that our, our parent pickup lines are much shorter than they have been in prior years. And our goal is to keep them that way. So, but it is something we will, we will take into consideration. We also find that as the weather changes, parents, you know, kids who were waiting at bus stops, parents sometimes drive. So we're keeping those factors into consideration as we look at the, at the data.
Can I ask how, how you're collecting the data? Like is the bus driver or?
What, what part, Kim?
For instance, like what Greg just said about like measuring from the time they get on the bus to the time they get home.
Yeah, we can, we can do that using the GPS system. We're able to get data points that are collected from every stop that a, a bus makes. So that is part of the work that Jean is extracting from our GPS system, Senovia. And that'll be part of the data set that I'm able to provide.
Perfect. And then I had another question about capacity, like are any of our routes sort of planned for more than two kids per? sort of planned for more than two kids per seat?
Yeah, and that is always the case, even prior to this new start time configuration. We always rooted every student in our district and that did have our capacity to over two per students per seat. But going off of that trend from what we've witnessed over the last, you know, five years is that that quickly falls down below the two student per seat average that we are, that we are used to. So yes, technically, we do have, we root more kids than, than what actually winds up being. And that's how that's kind of done. It's a, it's not an exact science, but we do take estimates off of prior experience.
Okay, so the, we anticipate that, that like, that it will reduce, the, the number of kids on the route will reduce so that they aren't three to a seat.
As, as, as much as we can.
Yeah, as much as we can. Okay. So I have one other question about buses.
Kim, can I just, can I just add an example to, so, so all students are routed regardless of whether they ride the bus or not. So that's the work that Jean Pinto does. But I'll just give an example of one particular bus driver. You know, so why is it taking longer to run route than we had thought it would? A relatively new bus driver stopping at every stop, even though there are kids getting on or off the bus. And so until that driver learns the route, he's, he is still stopping at all the stop, at those 16 stops if he doesn't have to, which as you can imagine, every stop adds time to the overall now. Another example, again, through some research of our principals, you know, one driver was stopping to clean the, you know, wipe down the, the seats before they kick on another school. So again, if that takes time, so this is just one example of how we're going to gain efficiency as, as we move forward with our routes and bus drivers gain experience.
That's kind of a perfect segue into my other question, which is about the apps. Like, I think a lot of families are disappointed that the beta of, from last year, like, isn't making an appearance this year. And I'm wondering, is that, do we have that in our contract with NRT? Like, I know we're waiting for them to develop something of their own, but like, are they required? Are they required to do it?
Yes, they are. And they, they do have an app ready. We are working with them to prepare the backend of it to make sure it's accessible and that, and that it works. One of the benefits of the, the start is that we are really looking at the bus routes closely so that when we do launch the app, which I do anticipate within a couple of weeks, it's going to be accurate. I think what we learned last year is here comes the bus wasn't always accurate. You would have, you know, sign up to follow your, your son's bus and it wound up being not the right bus at all. Those are the things that we've been able to reduce with the new launch of this app. That's going to be coming within the next couple of weeks. So I'm very pleased with what I've seen with it. We did test it out this summer in a couple of applications and it worked very well. So as quickly as we can get the backend up, we will. NRT's license with the app did not start until September 1st. So it's not like this has been something that's been in the works for months. They just had access to it on our first day of school. So now we have to do the work to prepare it and that wasn't something we could begin prior to that.
You good, Kim?
Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Katu, Katu.
So I'm just wondering, in terms of adjustments, when we look at, you know, things settling in and making tweaks to things, what are, what are we looking at other than the drivers becoming more familiar with the routes? Are there other sort of types of tweaks that we're looking at making?
Absolutely. Southborough and Northborough, for that matter, in, in a lot of ways are unique towns. These towns were not laid out on a grid that are exact lengths of roads. The uniqueness of the terrain in Southborough makes routing very challenging because it's not just by distance. We got to take some other things into account and that's why the driver knowledge is so critical. So in fact, Jean and I had a conversation with a driver this morning that gave us three or four suggestions that make a lot of sense. That's going to save 10 minutes. And that wasn't something we experienced before with our old routes. It is part of the new route development and understanding of those, that these are the tweaks that we were anticipating. So that goes back to the driver knowledge being so, so critical. So what you would see like, you know, we thought that the driver would be able to make that right turn to go down into a neighborhood. But you know what? The size of the bus makes that impossible. They got to go another route. We might not have caught that by the simple GPS design or the driver review, because until you actually do it, you don't really understand it. And that's why, you know, Greg has mentioned the uniqueness of the town does play into what we are and are not able to do.
Okay. I guess, so I, I'm asking about that partly because I'm, I'm wondering how much time realistically can be made up just by the drivers becoming familiar with the routes. And I'm wondering if we're also open to taking a look at other options like, I mean, one of the things I know I've pointed out in one of these meetings previously is that, you know, the start and end times of Neri and Finn are 25 minutes apart. So for example, I, you know, I know that there are plenty of kids that are getting picked up maybe an hour before their school actually starts. And then on the way home, I mean, you know, the Neri kids get picked up, I guess, probably three or, or thereabouts. And then they're on the bus almost half an hour before the rest of the kids for their route are on the bus. So I just, I'm just wondering if we're open to revisiting maybe that kind of timing or something like that, if it turns out that we can't make the routes a more reasonable length for especially the young kids or really anybody. I mean, that's, it's just a long commute.
Well, a couple of things to that. One, we always kept it open, the idea that we could fluctuate the start time of any of the schools, five to 10 minutes, which may be something that we look at, but it is way too early to, to, to make that decision. You know, certainly when it comes to the routes themselves, we are able to gain, I mean, a couple of things happened on the first day of school. There is dialogue between the parents and the driver. We did notice that on the first few days of school. We noticed that on the first two days of schools, drivers went the wrong direction. They took a left instead of a right. And we could see that kind of develop online. It really is true though, that all new routes, even ones that we've had for years, do take a few weeks to really understand the nuance of it and whether or not they're successful. So I think it is early. I think we will review all options that are available. We are making adjustments daily. We are going to be taking some stops off of one of our Algonquin routes and adding it to another bus tomorrow, so that, that bus can then get to Neri quicker. We did notice a problem area there. So it's, it's tweaks like that, that we think are going to be able to bring us to a more reasonable amount of time on, on the buses.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. I know it's not easy. It's definitely a complicated mission. So thank you for your work on it.
You're welcome.
Kim?
Just have a quick question. I'm just curious. Does, does anybody on R on the district end and/or NRT drive the routes before the bus driver gets in the bus?
Yes, the bus drivers are obligated by NRT not only to review the routes on paper, but also to drive the routes prior to the start of school.
Okay.
So that's how they're simulated. But it's also, if, if I went around in my Honda Accord, it's very different going around with a 60-foot bus. So that's another factor that it doesn't always match up. So I did a couple of the routes. I did a couple of them this summer. You know, to kind of spot check them here and there, but that was not something that we did until NRT had the routes in their hands. And then they are obligated to do trial runs.
Okay. Great, thanks.
And then the second question Jen, Jennifer had was around, you know, in terms of accomplishing the goal of adding more, more time for students to sleep. You know, again, if we look at our five Southborough schools, most of the start times stayed the same. Neri actually starts a little bit later. And Trotter is a little bit earlier. And we are finding that overall, we are gaining time in terms of when our buses are starting their routes. If you are in Southborough, and not last year, but a couple of years, you would notice buses on the, the road at, at anywhere between 6:20 and 6:30. Our buses are beginning their routes much later. And students are again, having more opportunities to sleep. I will share that this is a community effort that where we're seeing a great benefit is at the high school. We're hearing a lot of anecdotal comments from students, faculty and staff, that students are not as sleepy when they arrive to school at eight o'clock. That they are seeing the benefits. And we are making sure that, you know, we're not taking time away from our middle school students and elementary school students to benefit our high school students. And that's some of the analysis that is taking place. But on average, we are, I think we are making steps toward achieving the goal. And I think fine tuning the routes and tweaking the routes will help us get to where we need to be in a week.
Anything else? All right then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Keith. And next we have Mary Ellen Duggan, who will give us an update on the health and safety measures reopening schools this fall.
You're muted. Mary Ellen, you're muted.
I'm muted. Road I took over for you. So first of all, I would like to thank all of the nurses for all the hard work they have put in to get this school year up and running. And it's not that I don't love spending time with all of you, but I really was hoping we would not have this standing monthly date of this meeting, but the Delta variant had different ideas and I secured my plans for Wednesday evenings for the near future. So school started and we did have our first few cases, which was expected. We applied for the DESI testing and screening program and we're waiting for details about the project managers and and we're waiting for some testing supplies and access to the portals still. With the help of the Southborough Board of Health, Dr. Heather Alker, the director and the public health nurse, Taylor West, we were able to implement the test and stay program today at Neri School. So it allowed some of our students who are identified as close contacts to come back to school and have a test so that they could remain in school rather than quarantining at home. We're hoping to get the COVID safety check program, which we would all refer to as in the past. We hope to get that implemented by the end of September and at the latest begin that first week in October. In the meantime, we are offering weekly pooled screening for staff using J C M A, which is the company we used last year and throughout the summer. Today, my real update is to implore all of our school community to make a commitment to keep our schools as low risk as possible. To do that, we need every member to make a community commitment to follow the mitigation strategies that we know work. As a district, we continue to commit to optimizing and monitoring ventilation, to cleaning and disinfecting, to promoting hand hygiene, to providing adequate PPE, to testing and screening programs, to prompt and accurate contact tracing. We need the whole community, parents, students, teachers and staff to commit to the mitigation strategies of monitoring for symptoms and staying home when sick. Staying home while awaiting test results if you were tested because of symptoms, wearing a mask when indoors at school, participating in the testing and screening programs and getting vaccinated if eligible. We need to look back at that Swiss cheese model that we talked about a lot last year, knowing that each additional layer of mitigation decreases our risk of getting COVID-19. Some of the layers are the district responsibility and some are a personal responsibility. Please be safe, be smart and do your part and help us keep our schools open and low risk. So that was my community public service announcement, public health announcement, because we cannot ask enough or have people follow those guidelines strict enough so that we can keep our schools safe. We really need everybody to do their part in this and to monitor for symptoms to stay home if you're sick. I mean, those are up there as some of the top mitigation strategies that we have. So I am open to any and all questions that you may have. And I have some guests, special guests that are joining us tonight from our medical advisory team. I have Dr. Sarah Veltin, Dr. Andrea Sierra Nalo and our school physician, Dr. Safdarmadina. So they're here to help answer any questions you might have also.
Mary Ellen, if I could make a comment about what I think you nicely put forth regarding the importance of everyone in the community, parents helping in, in this process. I, I mean, I would really say that to send your child to school who is sick or if you, if they've taken, taken a test and, and you, and you you're not waiting for the results, I think it's downright irresponsible. Because there's a chain effect that affects so many others when, when bad results happen. And I noticed that even tonight where I think we have 11 attendees outside the panelists who have heard your comments and, and mine. Is there a way to get this message more strongly out to the whole community? Because the 11 folks that are listening now, I'm sure get it, but there's a, there's a lot of people out there that aren't listening to this that need to participate. You know, in, in, in doing this correctly. So I don't know, Greg, if you have thoughts about that or Mary Ellen, you have thoughts about that, but this is to me so important.
So we have, we are promoting this every, every notice that Mr. Martino has been sending out. It's one of the top paragraphs. We did put it on our resource for parents as the top paragraph. We've asked the principals to put it out in their notices to parents, asked the nurses and anything they sent home to put it out. I think that we have to, it's all a new learning curve, right? So we were doing, like we said during the summer, we had a little bit of a reprieve where we had lower numbers of cases and we got to take a step back and not be as diligent. And now we have to step back into that same place we were last year and really be diligent about all of those mitigation strategies that we know work. You know, we went through all last year, knowing that these are the things that work that keep us low risk and keep our, our students in school. So I think it's a learning curve and it's just those reminders that we need to keep putting out there.
So Mary Ellen, I'll add that, you know, obviously health and safety is a high priority for the district. It has been throughout the pandemic. But also families have experienced lack of continuity of instruction last year, which was very disruptive in, in respect to kind of the family rituals and routines, but also in terms of student learning. Our priority is to make sure there's continuity of learning for our students, that that continuity of instruction is really important to the social emotional wellbeing of our students for their academic growth. And in for that to happen, everyone needs to do their part, you know, and sometimes it's hard to make that decision as a parent to keep your child home because he or she might not be feeling well. But again, it's essential because that is how we'll be able to provide continuity over time to programming for our students and families in our district.
Finn?
I have a few questions for the medical advisory team. I was hoping first of all that, you know, given all the potential nationwide, the controversy around masking and all of that, whether or not you could speak a little bit to the efficacy of masking in children. And I know there was an, people have complained about no RCTs. Well, there is just an RCT that was published. So I was hoping you could maybe speak a little bit to that. And then the other comment that I was hoping, or the other question is if you could speak a little bit to this argument or the point that some folks have brought up about the fact that COVID is less serious, or kids are not really being that impacted by COVID and how what we know about Delta has changed that initial impression.
I would defer to the experts on this. So I can talk about masks and then maybe Safd, do you want to talk about pediatric? So
Um, so yeah, I think you raised really interesting questions, Jen, about sort of what do we really know about how well masks work? And I think it's important to be really clear to say that the data are just overwhelmingly in support of the fact that they work. We have a lot of really good data from a lot of settings. In the school setting, almost all of the data are masking in combination with all of the other kind of layered mitigation measures that we put into place last year. So there are not tremendous amount of data that really can specifically isolate the impact of any one of those interventions. We did participate in, um, a data analysis of eight public school districts that Northborough, Southborough graciously participated in. And, um, that was an analysis that when combined was, um, included districts that enrolled more than thirty-three thousand students. So it was a pretty big sample. And that analysis, um, looked at the risk that someone who came into a school with COVID would pass it along to someone else. And basically that risk was sevenfold greater when both the person with COVID and their contact were unmasked compared to when both of them were masked. So I think that's helpful data, um, and it's really specific to schools and it does try to isolate that impact. But, um, but it's, you know, still a relatively small sample compared to what you'd like to see. I think the question is, um, and, and the randomized trial that you mentioned was really one of the very first that looked at the impact of masks and did show a benefit. I think it didn't have a lot of very young people in it, so that's an important kind of caveat. But I think that overarching question that, that I have been asking is, you know, what is the level of evidence that we really need to know that masks are a good idea in schools? And I think when we're talking about, you know, medical therapies or vaccines, for example, something that might actually, um, really confer a lot of risk to somebody, for example, or be very expensive, sort of like a newer medication. Then I think you really want randomized controlled data, like you really want to know for sure, um, how solid are the data that this works? I think we have a lot of indirect data that masking works and actually don't think it's appropriate to say that we need randomized controlled trial data for masking in this setting. And the reason is because we are in a situation that's actually pretty similar in risk to where we were last year. So we have quite high vaccination in our communities. At the same time, we have, um, some reduced efficacy of the vaccination in terms of preventing infections. So I wanted to say clearly that vaccines are still very, very effective for preventing severe illness, hospitalization, et cetera. But if you sort of take maybe that slightly lower risk of getting infected with the slightly, um, higher transmission risk of Delta, it comes out to be relatively the same. And so I think we're not, in my mind, at a place where we want to take away one of the measures that we know is really, really effective. At the same time that we are taking away some of the others that were in our package last year. So we're moving away from some of the distancing, moving away from the cohorting. Um, and so I think masking is a really important thing to leave in place for a little while as we sort of see how this year plays out and learn more about Delta. And I, I also think it's really important to say that hopefully we won't have to do this forever. I think there are a lot of scientists who are really working on trying to understand like what would be a good off ramp for masking? Like when we have high vaccination rates and when hopefully we get low case counts again, what will be a safe threshold at which we could then come away from the masking? And we may at some point have to put them back on and then hopefully we can take them off. I think nobody wants to mask in schools forever. I think it, it is, they're physically very safe. I think there are some costs that many of the folks here have mentioned in terms of education and learning and things like that, that are, you know, generally worth their benefits, but important to acknowledge that they exist. But I'm hopeful that we won't have to do this forever.
So can I? I'm sorry, who, who did I?
Did you want me to answer the second part first and then take questions or?
If, if that's what, yeah, let's do that. If you prefer that, that's fine. Thank you.
So, um, you know, in terms of where COVID nineteen is in children, there's a couple of things to really remember is number one, are children under twelve are not vaccinated? So, um, you know, especially when we're dealing with K through eight right now, that is the, the probably, probably the primary factor we need to know. And, and as you all have heard, there are rising cases in children largely because they are unvaccinated. And when you look at where Delta goes for serious, seriousness of illness in children, you know, there are reports obviously of a lot of children's hospitals now being overwhelmed with children being admitted. But children still have a relatively lower rate of, um, hospitalization than adults do right now with Delta. The Department of Human Health and Services, um, has had a graph recently that showed that it was about two per one hundred thousand per, um, under, under the age of eighteen, but still well up to twelve to fourteen per one hundred thousand for, you know, people above sixty-five. So I think, you know, we have to take that perspective. We are going to see more cases, but thankfully it doesn't look like we're seeing maybe that level of serious illness, um, with the Delta variant. You know, that being said, children can get seriously ill from COVID nineteen, even though it's at a much lower rate. And to me, you know, we need to do everything to protect any child from getting seriously ill or being in the hospital or in an ICU. So, you know, that part is real, um, the Delta variant can, um, you know, still cause things like M I S C, which we heard about last year, the multi-system, um, inflammatory disease. So these are all things we do need to keep in mind. And I think it really supports the idea, you know, that children still need to be masked. You know, we, you know, vaccine approval for under the age of twelve may not be around till possibly late December, January. We're not, you know, we don't know that back for sure yet. So, um, you know, I hope that kind of answered your question that, you know, yes, still less, but still there definitely. And obviously the Delta variant is more contagious as well. I do have to say, you know, we are seeing more pediatric cases on the ground in our clinics than we were at this time last year, largely still acquired within the community. Now we have just begun schools, obviously. So, um, and most of the cases in, that we're seeing are a child acquired from an unvaccinated adult.
Thank you.
Questions? I'll, I'll, I'll ask one. I'm not sure there's an answer for this, or at least, uh, one that we really know the answer to. I, I believe the Department of Education has, um, mass Department of, um, elementary and secondary education has, has, um, prescribed that, we wear masks in the schools for now. Do you have a sense as to, uh, when that might be reevaluated? And if so, what will the criteria be to? In the, what will the criteria be in that evaluation?
So I think this is not part of the medical advisory team, but it all depends on, um, the commissioner. His initial statement was that on October first, they, before October first, they would evaluate, where things were and make another, you know, statement from there. The medical advisory team has discussed the parameters that we would look for, you know, like what would it be? Cause eighty percent has been, um, put out there, eighty percent vaccination rate. By the commissioner would mean, you know, that would possibly mean that masks could be removed. If you met that and the medical advisory team, we've talked about, um, it being eighty percent at each grade level. Because we do have a high, if you're looking at the whole school, the staff are included in that eighty percent. So we have, we could have staff that were really high percentage of vaccination and say ninth graders that were a lower percent, like seventy or so. So not everybody would be eighty percent. So I think that that's one, uh, thing that we would look at as a district when we were making our decisions. But we're looking, I'm hoping soon, maybe the last week in September, we'll hear more from DESI, unless Greg has any other insight.
No, I think it's a, I think it's a great question, Roger, and I think it speaks to, um, Dr. Sierra Nello's, um, comment around what is the off ramp? And I think everyone is trying to really look at data and make informed decisions around what is the off ramp? And how do we do it safely and not rush a decision? So I think the good news is that there is that mask mandate through October first. And I think we as a district have a, a math, a face covering policy in place. So regardless of what DESI decides, um, the committee will have a face covering policy in place, uh, up and up through, but when it decides that it wants to rescind the policy, um, because it's safe to do so. So, um, more information to, to be shared as, as time passes.
Just a follow-up, um, and it's, I think too early to even answer this question, but I'll ask it anyway. So presuming that, um, some kind of vaccination percentage comes into play, related to, um, a masking policy. And as you said, not, well, not even every school is going to necessarily be at the same percentage. So, um, if you determine that, um, that, that some percentage, whatever it is, would be a determining factor, would, would you think that, that the schools would actually have, um, different choices? Or would you try to, um, at, at least, uh, hold, hold everything together kind of on the same, um, same basis?
I think the only schools that we'd really be looking at, Roger, right now would be the high school. Because a third of our middle school doesn't even have the opportunity to be vaccinated. So, um.
Fair enough.
So those, that, that, it really is not going to come into play for K to eight, pre-K to eight, um, schools for a while.
Well, the only one, I, I guess that would even be possible, right, would be, uh, would be the middle school. But then you have the issues of, of certain, a, a large segment of those kids are not vaccinated anyway. So what to do about the ones that are? All right.
So Roger, can I just make a general comment that, you know, as a district, I, and, you know, we've said this many times, but I don't think we can say it enough. We're very fortunate to have a medical advisory team with a high level of expertise in the medical field. Um, and specifically they've also engaged with the medical, um, community in terms of how do we approach COVID nineteen safely in our schools? Um, so I think we are incredibly fortunate to have access to, uh, very smart people, who have the best interest of our districts and who are advising us. So again, I just want to thank the medical advisory team and, um, you know, a, a lot of comments from community members, very thankful about our, about the team and their service. And we're very appreciative of it.
I certainly echo that. Thanks. Um, very much so. Other, other questions? Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Roger, is that okay?
You know what? Absolutely. I'm looking around. Oh, you know what? I had my, I had my screen scrolled down, so I didn't even see your hand. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, I just, I have one question about testing and one about contact tracing. Um, on the testing, I'm just curious about what to expect. Do we expect it to be generally similar to last year? And, and also when do we think it might be, um, implemented?
So there, for the state program offered to us by DESI, um, is three programs, three separate programs. So, um, the COVID safety checks, which are pooled screening, as we know, we are hoping to get it set up by October first at the late, very latest. That will be similar. It will be a test at home. It may be a saliva test to start and then switch to a nasal swab. The company is working on getting their, um, approval for the nasal swab right now. So, um, we may start off with a nasal swab or it may start off with a saliva. But it would be a collect at home and drop off at school's procedure, just like last year. The other two programs, one is the test and stay program, which is available for in-school close contacts. And what that does is that, um, if students are identified as an in-school close contact, then they can get, have a rapid, um, FinX now antigen test done every day at school by nursing staff or support staff from C I C. And if it's negative, they could stay in school. So that's done for up to seven days, past their last exposure. And then, um, their quarantine, their test and stay would be done and they wouldn't need to quarantine to be able to go to school every day. The other option is diagnostic antigen testing, and that would be if someone became symptomatic at school. Then they would, um, the nurses have the opportunity to do a rapid antigen test. And if they followed any of the symptoms that are on that list, they would be sent home for, uh, PCR test, follow-up PCR test. So the, the rapid antigen test will give us the opportunity to get started quickly if it was positive with contact tracing. But we are, the PCR test is the gold standard. So you always need to follow up if there's, you're symptomatic with that PCR test. So those are three programs. We did start the test and stay today. And we are actually, we'll be doing it at four schools tomorrow. So, um, today it was one school, two schools, um, tomorrow will be four. So, um, that's keeping kids in school, which is important, um, keeping them in and being safe about it. And, um, the diagnostic testing, hopefully, um, I mean, we, that can start anytime, really, if anybody became symptomatic at school and needed to be tested, as long as the nurses get all the training they need.
Mary Ellen, I'll just add that tomorrow, uh, Mary Ellen will be sending out information on the three programs as well as the consent form. So, um, just for the community to be on the lookout for, for the consent form.
Great. That's pretty helpful. That's even more types of testing than I thought, than I thought we had. So that's, that's great.
So it's one consent for all of the testing. So one consent, it's one for all.
Okay. And then on my second question just had to do with contact tracing. So, um, I, I, I'm just trying to think through how contract tracing is working at this particular point in time with, I know some of the, you know, like there's recess, you know, and kids are everywhere and, um, and, uh, I think there's certain settings with even within the school where there aren't necessarily assigned seats. So in terms of contact tracing, are we just tracing contacts where assigned seats occurred? And we know that they were near somebody and then just call it a day or how are we, how are we doing that?
So contact tracing is, uh, um, a task. An overwhelming task to start. It can take hours and hours. But, um, through the interviews with the teachers, we look at the way their classrooms are set up. If they did small group work, who worked in the small group together, what did they do? Were they seated at their desk? We go through the whole day with every special, with every specialist they were with. What was the seating chart in there? Where were they were seated? Lunchrooms, uh, we have assigned seating in our lunchrooms, so we have that. So every class, um, does have a seating chart, but sometimes they work in small groups and the teachers really need to keep track of those small groups that work together. Or this week, week we came up to something that we hadn't had to deal with before was indoor recess for contact tracing for indoor recess. So we needed to find out who was the adult that was in the classroom during indoor recess and who was playing together and things like that. So, um, it is an extensive process, but, um, a close contact in school, if both parties are masked, is someone that's between zero and three feet for greater than fifteen minutes. So in the classroom, it's between the zero to three feet. If someone is within the three to six foot range for greater than fifteen minutes, when both people are masked, those people are notified just to, you know, monitor for symptoms, to look for symptoms. You aren't considered a close, you don't have to go through any testing. We just want you to know, um, that you were in that vicinity, in that three to six foot range. The lunchroom, um, the seats are three feet apart, but at both parties are unmasked at the time. So we need to go to that six foot perimeter and, um, all the people in the lunchroom that are within six feet are considered close contacts. Anything outside, we don't need to contact trace for outdoors.
Thank you. I, I feel like this is another topic that's prompting me to say thank you for all your hard work. That's, that's a lot.
It's not just me, though. All the nurses do it too. I have someone working on one right now. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mary Ellen, can I add one more thing about testing?
Sure.
I think, um, you know, just building off of what you were saying earlier about the importance of people staying home and getting tested when they're sick. So this is a different kind of testing, not one of the three kinds of testing that's going to be offered through the state program, because ideally this will not happen at school. Um, I mean, a few people will develop symptoms at school and then there's that separate diagnostic programs that Mary Ellen mentioned. But for most people will wake up in the morning and have a runny nose, um, of need to get testing. And I just wanted to highlight the work of the district also to try to provide resources for families about, you know, places that you can go easily and quickly and nearby to get PCR testing for when you have symptoms. Cause I think, you know, this will probably happen to all of us this year. It's helpful to have that list on hand, so you're not scrambling around. Cause each place has, you know, certain places are open on certain days of the week. And, um, you know, some places may get you in faster than others, but, but Mary Ellen has a really nice list and Safter's contributed. But but Mary Ellen has a really nice list and South ours contributed a lot to that as well. So maybe we can make sure to flag where people can find that easily, but keep it on hand. And please, 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 just to echo what she said, all almost all a very large proportion of the transmissions that were observed in school settings over the past year were from people who had symptoms and came to school with symptoms, so. So please, please do that and we'll try to make testing as easy as possible. Excuse me.
Thanks Andrea.
Jen?
This was more just a comment to parents. I I wanted to kind of reiterate Greg's point about our medical advisory team. I work in a medical school and I work in a research department. We have an unparalleled team here in the district. We're really, really lucky and I don't think parents really understand the extent to which we are lucky because we have incredible expertise. And it's a confusing time, I think, as people are reading things on Facebook and news media and they're saying, well, this study, you know, doesn't show that. And and I just want to remind people that these folks on our medical advisory team have spent an entire career in education and continued research on knowing how to read through the research articles. In many cases, they've published too. So I really, you know, want to encourage people to say, listen, you know, and many of these folks also have kids in the school system too. So they're motivated not only by their own research, but also by wanting to, you know, having their own kids there and wanting them to be safe. So I really, you know, I would like to thank our team and to encourage parents, you know, listen to your medical team that has the expertise to understand the research as opposed to, you know, necessarily what you're seeing on Facebook or these other questions. And to reach out to the team if you do have medical questions related to COVID. So thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Yes, thank you. I guess we're ready to move to number two, Greg, a new business?
Yeah, so I just, Roger, I'll just a few closing remarks. And I'm always amazed at the tremendous effort that everyone puts in to make sure that students have the best experience possible. I don't think there's many organizations that actually stop and close down on one day of the year, have a summer recess for many months and then welcome students back. It's a tremendous lift from all involved, from the central office team, central office staff, to educators, to to parents and our students. And we couldn't be more fortunate. Our technology teams, our custodial teams, our teachers just do an outstanding job. And I couldn't be more proud to be the district superintendent and be a member of of this team.
Alright, thank you.
So legislative update. No, there are no new updates at this time and Roger through the chair. It's the will of the committee to have principals that they have homework to do this evening. So if if they can be dismissed, I think that would be greatly appreciated.
Any objections from any committee members? Seeing none. Sure, absolutely. And thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Have a great night.
Neri's statement of interest update is up next.
Yes, so in in June, the district submitted a statement of interest to MSBA for the core building project. And the focus building was Neri School. So we have reached out to MSBA, placed several calls in to see where they are in terms of the board reviewing the statements of interest, but we have not heard back, but we will keep. We will keep calling them and trying to get updates on on what their timeline is in terms of reviewing the statements of interest. So no news at this point in time.
Questions? Okay. Space needs study?
Sure, so. So the the capital planning committee and the school research subcommittee has been working really on thinking about the master plan for the town and and the role schools play in terms of space and capital projects. So one of the tasks the district undertook in the spring was really to look at our current space and programmatic needs across all of our pre K through eight buildings. And really think programmatically, what would be feasible and what would be beneficial to programs for our students. So Keith and I have met with each of the principals to talk about programmatic needs. We've met with the entire team and we're putting forth and articulating a plan around you know, different ways our space, our schools could be used to maximize student experience. So we are in the middle of generating that report and we'll have a presentation and executive summary for the committee at the October meeting.
Okay. We have the special town meeting on November first, so line item. Do we have anything to say about that at this point in time?
No, I think at this point in time, I didn't think there are any warrant articles. The committee is moving forth.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any. It'll be interesting logistically to see how that's handled. Where there's still have a lot of unknowns as far as COVID. Okay, number six is the approval of a $500 donation. From the, am I pronouncing this right? Bo Shane family, am I pronouncing that correct? Close?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you speak to that a little bit?
No, just just another example of a generous generous donation to the Trotter Trotter Middle School Music Program. And it's going to good use and I believe that Jamie Clark already has some ideas of how to spend that money and to support the program and students.
Yeah, I I I have a soft spot for for music programs and I like to see any any additional support for the music programs. This would require a vote. Does anybody have any questions or comments about it? I would entertain a vote then to approve the $500 donation from the Bo Shane family to the Trotter Middle School Music Program.
So moved?
Is there a second?
A second?
So moved by Katura. Second by Kamali. Any discussion? Roll call vote then, please. Kamali?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous. We are now going to move to old business. First item is the before and after school extended day program. Superintendent?
Sure, just provide an update on on where we are in terms of extended day. So this is my eighth year in the district. I've been part of many conversations around extended day programs. And specifically the question whether or not to contract out or actually for the district to take on running a before and after school program. We engaged in a request for proposal process this summer. And one of the many conversations that we had through the process was really the idea that we feel as a district, we want to study the feasibility of taking on a before and after school program. We contract out for a lot of different services, transportation being one. Before and before and after school extended day program is the only service that we contract out that directly provides a service to our students. Through the conversations with the central office team, we feel that the resources that we have within district, knowing our students, that we can really develop an outstanding for an after school program for our community and also capitalize on the expertise that we have as a school district. So as a result, the district has decided to reject all of the requests for proposals received. We've created a one year licensing agreement for South Borough Extended Day Program. So it will be in place for the entire school year. And this year, I've asked the central office leadership team to conduct a feasibility assessment of launching its own before and after school program. And if we determine that that is the path that we want to take, it's feasible and it actually makes sense, then that's what we'll do and plan to prepare to have our own in district program beginning in twenty two, twenty three. Happening, certain questions?
Jen?
I was just wondering if you could speak to, this might be premature actually, but to potential hire, will this be staffed by teachers in the school? Will there be external hiring or?
Yeah, I mean, a combination of of both. You know, we've had, you know, we we are, I've had conversations with the South Borough Extended Day Program Board of Directors and kind of talked about the direction we're heading in. Obviously, that has impacts for SEDP. But we would be looking at external, you know, and internal hires. We would need a director to to run the program. So that would be a position we hire in district. So a combination of both is what we're what we're thinking at this point in time.
Thank you.
Kamali?
And Greg, and to the administrative office. I mean, parents are really grateful that we had a extended day program that started off in September. So I just wanted to relay that and I think that situation is going well. I wonder though, as far as timeline, as as part of the committee, I'd want to hear feedback from the review or the study very early on so that we're not looking to make decisions on this, you know, late next year. So if you have a estimate now, like this would be something that we would address in by spring by, could you, could you tell me, share that?
Sure, so our so our feasibility study will conclude early in December, I think December second or third is is the timeline that we have. And at that point, we'll make a decision to move forward with establishing before and after school program or continue to contract out. And Kamali, to your point, that is to provide us enough time to plan and prepare, but also communicate with the current provider and families so that they have a surety of of what they can expect come the fall and the summer in terms of of extended day programs.
Good, Kamali, okay, Kim?
I just had a quick question of you, have you made contact with? Have you had discussions with South Borough Extended Day Program? Are they sort of on board with this one year license agreement?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we notified all of the three bidders to let them know. And, you know, so once that process concluded, you know, we did share the feasibility process that we'll be engaging in. And, you know, I think all of the bidders have offered to partner and assist with the process and offer their expertise. So from from the three bidders, we have that offer and we will reach out to each one and and see if we can capitalize on their expertise to make sure we are creating an outstanding program for our families.
Other questions? Alright. Let's move to the.
Hold on Roger, I'm sorry. Have you given some more thought Greg into who? What are some groups within the community that you're going to kind of leverage to ask questions about what type of program? Or are you going to use the feedback that we received from that massive survey, you know, a few months ago? And 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 I'm thinking about the groups like that provide special services. Then there's the youth and family center groups. There are maybe elders in the elders in the community, meaning families that have had to use extended day over many, many years. So they can give you kind of feedback over in the past five years, ten years, three children. These are things that worked, didn't work. So you might want to keep an eye out for that when you're reviewing what you can and can't do. So I want to know, have you kind of identified that? Or that's all part of things that you're thinking and you're you're going to approach?
No, that will be an important part of kind of the feasibility and also, you know, who do we need to reach out to and and pull in in terms of this process? I think, you know, obviously, this is a service to our families. So families are a really important part in terms of getting feedback and input. We did have that one community forum, which was very helpful. And I'll add that we've also reached out to other communities, other school districts who actually operate their own before and after school program to get a sense of, you know, their experiences, you know, their lessons learned. You know, we reached out to Shrewsbury, we're reaching out to Ashland, and there are a few others. So we will be trying to capitalize on the expertise in our community and outside of our community to get input, feedback around the program we developed.
Okay, great. And so I guess Roger, we would want to make sure that this is something that's kind of on our periodic agenda of of items we want updates on.
So are you looking for updates, Kamali? Before the study is finished? So you'd like to hear something about this at every meeting or?
Periodic, maybe. Yeah, between, it's September through December is the estimate. So, you know, I think something periodically, once a month, that just says, we know we are progressing, we've reached, we've hit a roadblock or, you know, we can't concentrate on this because COVID is taking, you know, like some sort of periodic update.
Well, once a month periodically sounds like every meeting to me. Okay. I guess we'll maybe put it in as a placeholder. Other questions? Issues on this?
Jennifer, Jen Primack?
Oh, I see it.
I just have a question. Will will the school also consider doing summer camps or summer programming as part of this?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're going to mirror the level of services that parents experience with SEDP. So summer programming would be part of that. You know, for many years, we've tried to launch enrichment programs and what we're seeing, this is another opportunity to be to be able to, you know, kind of launch enrichment and summer programs for our families.
Thank you.
Any more? Okay. Next line item is the subcommittee assignments. I guess I'm going to propose the following as far as tonight's meeting. I don't, well, everybody should have their list in their packets that was supplied to the committee. I don't know. Could we put that up on the screen easily? I don't know that we have to. Yeah, maybe. Okay. Maybe a little tough to read for some people, but I would propose is this. Tonight. And I guess I'll, I'm just going to kind of roll call. If anyone would like to be on a subcommittee that they are not on. Let's identify it now. We'll update the list and then we'll review the list after this and determine if we have any any areas that we really feel we still need to add to. If that makes sense. And I think what I'm going to do because If that makes sense. And I think what I'm going to do, because Kim, you are a new committee member and wouldn't necessarily be on the list in as many places as you might prefer. If it's all right, I'd like to start with you and to see if you have any committees you'd like to be on.
And I also said that, I think, I don't know which meeting it was, the last meeting maybe, that I would do the committees that Jessica had been appointed to, which I think was so already on the Policy Subcommittee, but then also for the the liaison, I think senior citizens, she was on Technology Working Group. The Public Relations Communications Subcommittee. I think that might have been it for her. Um. And then my question. Those study groups, like Cafeteria Food Services is active, but it doesn't have anybody. Is it really active? Like?
It was not active last year. A year before it was. So yes, we are hoping to reactivate it.
Can we? I was just, let me just interrupt. Should we, should we? Do you want us to rely on the, you know, on the, on the active inactive identification that's on the list, Greg, as far as the district's needs?
Yes. Yeah. So I did go through this, this list and tried to identify those subcommittees or liaisons that were inactive. So this should be accurate.
Okay.
Okay. So unless somebody else is interested, I'll do the ones that Jessica was on. Plus, I'll throw my name in for the Cafeteria Food Services Study Group.
Okay. There's a typo on the Policy Development Subcommittee, just to.
Oh, right.
Since, since Kim's.
Yeah, since we're here.
Kim's being so generous in her time. I want to make sure we get that fixed. I'm sorry, go ahead, Kim.
No, that's it.
All right. Thanks. Let me go down the list. Katura, anything excite you?
Uh. I, I think I have my hands full with what, what I.
I understand.
Yeah, if there's something that, that needs somebody and, you know, but I, I feel, I feel good.
I think, I think on this pass, I'm really just looking for people that are looking, you know, for something that they're not on. And then we'll kind of see where we are and come back and put incredible intense pressure, you know, on people if, if we still have some needs.
It's a good plan.
Jennifer?
It looks good.
Okay. Kamali?
I'm going to stick with what I have listed.
All right. So we'll update this with a lot of Kim, okay, and, and see if, and see if it looks like that there's some specific needs that we, that are critical to fill, that we, that we don't have filled already. But we do have a lot of participa, I would like to say, we do have a lot of participation in these subcommittees and a lot of excellent participation. So that's great. All right. Turning the page, or at least my page. Capital Plan Update, and thank you, everybody.
So Capital Plan Update, so it's hard to believe that we are actually starting the process to think about FY23. I know the Finance Department under Becky's leadership is already starting to engage the leadership team in those conversations. But in terms of the capital plan, we've had two unexpected repairs that will require some unanticipated funding. The first is the water heater at Neary School, which Keith can speak about. And then secondly, we just learned of a power issue at the Trotter School that developed about a week ago and we're coming to resolution. So it was going to have Keith provide an update on those two capital unanticipated projects. So Keith, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Greg. So first, the hot water. It's actually the hot water retention tank at the Neary School did have a leak a few months ago. We were able to mitigate that by reducing the volume that's within that tank. And we was able to isolate the leak to a very small area. So it is, we did have it diagnosed by a couple of vendors all agreeing that we need to bypass that retention tank and go to a new system. As of now, the leader in the clubhouse is a gas hot water tank that would be replacing it into another location within the boiler room at Neary. And during the process, we would be draining and removing the retention tank that has the leak as part of it. So Brian Fantoni, once again, has stepped up and looked at different and creative solutions to make that happen. And we have gone out to quote for the project. And we're hoping to isolate a vendor within the next few weeks and then schedule the project accordingly. It is one of those types of projects where we might have to do it and utilize over vacation so that we're not interrupting school, but that is the plan right now for the water heater at Neary. But it is not interrupting any of the services or any of the access to water that we would need.
So Keith, I'll add two comments. And the first comment is that, you know, I think one of the impacts COVID-19 has had is in terms of availability of some of the parts. So this is a circumstance where we were hoping to have this project accomplished over the summer. But due to the difficulty of getting the parts for the repair, we had to postpone it to December. And then secondly, this is not going to impact our operational budget. We do have a facilities revolving account where we do keep funds in for, for unanticipated repairs. So we don't have to go to the town and ask for additional money. So again, the, the cost of this repair will be out of our facilities revolving account.
And if there are no questions, I can go on to the power, the electrical panel at Trotter. So that is the, that was the project of the week that arose, that really came to a head over the Labor Day weekend. Once again, I want to thank Brian Fantoni and his leadership to make sure that we did not interrupt school at all due to the loss of the panel. If you can imagine, it is the large electrical panel that receives outside service from National Grid for the 120 square foot building. So it is a large piece of equipment that ultimately did fail. We don't know exactly how it failed. We know one of the factors is that it is more, or just about 20 years old. And those pieces of equipment do have life expectancy around that time. So it's not 100% surprising that it did fail. It is surprising about how quickly it failed, and that is something that we are investigating. Over the weekend, we were able to have or get advice from four different electricians that all agreed that the panel needs to be replaced. And we're working right now to secure a panel, have it tested properly. And then if all goes well, it will be installed over this weekend, on Saturday, this coming Saturday, September 11. We're hoping for good news tomorrow about the testing of the panel and then ultimately the installation. We have been in contact with the Electrical Inspector of Southboro, as well as the Southboro Fire Department, to make sure that the current generator in place is working effectively and properly to serve our school. And it is, we got a clean bill of health on that today. And they will be inspecting the repair, the stages of the repair from tomorrow's prep through installation, which we hope will happen this Saturday. If for whatever reason, the panel is not able to arrive or is, doesn't pass the appropriate test, we will have to go out and try to find another panel. But like Greg said, finding parts certainly of this magnitude is very challenging. In fact, the one that we're getting is coming from Texas and then will be tested in Connecticut and then transported up here to Massachusetts. So it is a large scale operation, but we have had a lot of cooperation from our contracted electrician to get it done. And we have confidence that if we get a little luck tomorrow, we should have no interruption to school at all, beginning on Monday. And we will be off of the generator at that time. So the hope is that this goes well.
If I have a really quick question about the generator, I see, I see Kamali's got her hand up. But how, have you had to refuel that? Or does that have the capacity to have made it through the whole week? Or what's the situation on the fuel?
Thank you, Roger. So what we did is we did decide to get an alternate generator. We're not using the one that typically powers the building during power outages. We got an alternate, we were renting an alternate generator that is out the back entrance of Trotter that is able to power the whole building. Over the weekend, obviously, the building wasn't in use. And we saw moderate usage and fuel usage, diesel. With one day of operation on Wednesday, we did see that that did increase. So Brian is monitoring the levels closely and we've, we've scheduled a couple of refills throughout the weekend and then in the beginning of next week, just to be certain. So yes, burning through fuel is something we're monitoring daily.
Okay, Kamali?
Um, Keith, for Trotter, was there an issue with the internet? Was that tied to the power or?
100, 100%, yes. The, the issues with the internet were directly related to the power. A big thank you to Maurice Myrie and the tech team for diagnosing that. We did discover that one of our backup battery units that's supposed to keep that system up in line had failed over the weekend. Of course, we didn't discover that until school began. It was one of the wiring closets in the back of the building. So it wasn't discovered until we were in operation on, on, on Wednesday, and that was quickly remedied. So now we are all full on the generator power and we did not have interruptions today. In fact, I was at Trotter to kind of observe it and to check in with some folks. And they didn't even realize we were on generator power because everything was working well. So we were able to recover within a day.
Now, I'm wondering also if you, if we are impacted by, you know, a lot of the country also just went through some flooding and power issues as well. And so the equipment that we're trying to gather, I'm guessing other people are trying to gather. So it looks like we were able to acquire one and that's going to come here. But the resources that is taking, the people, et cetera, is that then?
It's been an obstacle, but it hasn't been something that has been insurmountable. And I think we, we've gotten a little bit of luck. We also had a couple of panels that we thought we were going to be able to get, and then we were not because it either wasn't compatible or it wasn't available. So we're hopefully, we've hit the match with this and we hope to have it in, in Massachusetts by tomorrow afternoon.
So I will add, Kamali, I was surprised that we actually were able to get a generator. Yeah, because again, those are in high demand across the country because some of the significant weather events. And Keith, the only thing I would add is I just don't want to, this, this is a significant failure. The main electrical panel, I just want to compliment Brian Fantoni and his team for how it's been handled. Because we haven't had a loss of operations in terms of impacting school. I, we are also working with Town Administrator Mark Purple to potentially put an insurance claim. We're still trying to get a sense of, again, why this failure happened. But we're confident that potentially it will be covered under insurance. But again, this, this cost of this unexpected repair will be coming out of the facilities revolving account. And again, that is, that fund is for these types of unexpected events so that we can move quickly and have the funding and it doesn't impact the overall operational budget that was budgeted by the town voters.
Kamali, you still, hand up still or not?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right, moving to enrollments.
Sure. So in your packet is the enrollment data for September 1st, 2021. And I will say that all of our class sizes are within the school committee's class size policy are very healthy. I'll also share that our final kindergarten numbers at this point in time, we have 117 kindergartners enrolled. I believe at this time in June, we had approximately 104. And we were projecting 119. So we're right within the window that we had projected. Our total enrollment as of 9/1 is 1,157. And our NESTE projection was 1,121. So we have 36 new students enrolled in our K through 8 system, which is, which is more than we typically see in a school year. We do attribute that to a lot of families, a lot of real estate movement around the area. And also some families who decided not to enroll their kids last year during COVID and re-enrolled in that increased our enrollment. I will be sharing with the committee in October more detailed enrollment numbers in terms of how many students moved into our community and at each grade level. And then conversely, how many students unenrolled in last our district. So that information will be available at the October meeting. And we have to answer any questions.
Any questions? And I guess we'll move to budgets.
Yes, so the Finance Department, I think, has done a tremendous job. It's been very busy closing out fiscal year 21 and launching fiscal year 22 and is in the process of starting fiscal year 23. So I think in three different places right now in terms of fiscal years. And just want to compliment Becky and her team for a great job closing out fiscal year 21. And Becky will provide an update on the end of the year report, as well as the monthly general fund expenditure report and a verbal update on the COVID-19 related financials.
Yes, as Greg said, it's always interesting at this time of year because we really do have our hands in three fiscal years as we close out the previous fiscal year, start the, the current fiscal year that we're in, and then begin again the budget process. So as you can see in your packet, the fiscal year 2021 monthly general fund report that we did close out the fiscal year with no money remaining on the bottom line. Most of the areas where we saw overages can be attributed directly to the COVID-19 pandemic. And those areas are teacher salaries because of the increased number of teaching staff that we required to run our various models that we had in place last year. Nursing salaries, heating and electricity, and then also building maintenance. Conversely, many of the areas where we saw savings can also be attributed to COVID-19. And those examples are professional development and instructional materials because we were able to utilize the grants that were available to us to offer those services and those materials to our, to our teachers and to our staff. And then also the other area we saw our savings is in our transportation. And that was something that we had talked about throughout the year as we renegotiated our contract with NRC for last year based on our hybrid model. I also want to point out the cafeteria services line item that's included in your budget. As you can see, there was $14,154 included in the operational budget. So for last school year, I did keep you updated on where the food services program was running throughout the year. We did end the year with a slight deficit. It was $3,539.84. The remaining $10,000 has been used to create a true liability account for our student lunch account balances. And this was done in coordination with the town accountant and the town treasurer in Southboro. This liability account will be used for those student lunch accounts. When parents put money on the books for their students, it will be held in this separate account. It became very apparent last year as families were requesting, as, as parents were requesting refunds due to the fact that we did have free lunches. And so we did work with the town accountant to establish. And so we did work with the town accountant to establish this liability account. And thankfully, we are addressing these needs through the great work of our new financial accountant, Sunny Cox. So before I move on to FY22, I didn't know, Roger, if you wanted to make a motion on the FY21 budget?
Yeah, I'm muted, I'm muted. Wasn't important anyway. So I think we need to vote on several things. So you need the school committee to approve that, that final, that the, the final budget on 2021, correct?
Until audited, yes.
Right, until audited. So I would, look at, I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the Southborough School Committee, or Southborough Schools 2021 budget. Until audited. The final Southborough Schools 2021 budget until audited. Do I hear a so moved?
So moved, Kamali?
And a second?
A second?
Second by Katura. Questions? Roll call vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
I vote yes, so it's approved unanimously.
Okay, I will move on to the fiscal year 2022 report as of August 31st. You can see that we have $1,171,692 or 5.39% remaining on the bottom line. And comparing this report to where we were last year at this time, we had $1,452,175 or 6.84 remaining on the bottom line. But we are tracking pretty close to where we were last year. I will say, one of the main differences is that the finance team has really worked diligently to begin the process of encumbering any anticipated funds for the FY22 year. And has also worked tirelessly to make sure that all of our staff, especially our new staff were added over the summer months so that we could run our first payroll last week. And that is all that I have for FY22.
So again, should we be approving that general fund expenditure report as of? I, I guess it's going to be. As of August 30?
August 31st, 2021 until audited.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the this, the Southborough Schools fiscal year 22 monthly general fund expenditure report as of August 31st until audited. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Katura? Do I hear a second?
Second.
I lost it. I'm sorry, Kim. All right, any, any, any questions? Roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
I vote yes, so that's unanimous. And we have this student activity account, right, Becky?
Yes. So what we have done is we have worked with Brian Valentine, the town treasurer. Trotter currently has a student activity account. It is a revolving account and that revolving account will still remain at Trotter. However, they have a, their own checking account that is attached to this revolving account. And it's one that the principal has to be bonded for and they have to reconcile with the town treasurer. And it also has to be audited on a regular basis. And so what we have done is we have decided to, or we're asking the committee to vote to close the checking account. And all expenses that are student activity related will run through the town's warrant process as opposed to having a separate checking account. So it will eliminate the additional need to have an audit done on the checking account. It will eliminate the need for very harsh to be bonded as well. So there is, there are some cost savings to the town as well in going through this process.
Any questions on this before we, we vote on it?
I have a question.
Katura?
What does that mean that it would go through the warrant process? Like, oh, are you saying that there'll be a warrant to set up a new account?
No, so it will, will, you will pay it just like we pay any of our other bills. So the warrants that you review and you sign, it will, it will be processed in that same manner. Right now, the checks are being written by the, the school administration and being mailed out.
I was thinking town meeting warrant for some reason.
I'll just echo, this is a much more transparent, more checks and balances in terms of this process.
Yes.
Okay, that was my question too. I thought, I, I thought town warrant too and I didn't understand. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Becky, is this the only thing remaining that maybe they are, he is writing checks against? Or are there other things?
This is the only account that, this checking account, and there are no other checking accounts aside from the town's checkbook that are being written within the school district.
Awesome. Okay, so that's great. So this, removing this last one would make, make good sense.
Exactly.
Other questions? All right, so I may have to catch my breath in the middle of this. Greg, were you going to say something?
No, I did, I did put a sample motion.
Yeah, I saw, I thank, I saw, I thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to authorize Town of Southborough's town treasurer to close the Trotter Middle School Student Activity Checking Account and to transfer the remaining funds from the checking account to the Student Activity Account Revolving Fund.
So moved.
Moved by Katura, thank you. Is there a second? Was that Kamali? Yes.
Yes.
Second by Kamali. Questions? Roll call vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
I vote yes, so that's unanimous. So I guess we're on to what they verbal, this, I guess, kind of just a verbal presentation on the COVID-related financial?
Yes, I know, I know you'll miss my presentations.
Already missing it, right?
So as I had communicated back in June, we had fully, the district had fully expended the state coronavirus prevention fund, which totaled $37,300. The CBRF school reopening grant, which was for $275,400. And then the remote learning technology essentials grant, which was $1,724. We've also worked very closely with the Town of Southborough to move an additional $77,778 onto the town's CBRF grant. And we've also provided $29,095 to the town for their FEMA submission as well. Many of those costs are related to the cleaning, the additional cleaning that was taking place in the buildings. And then also for PPE, the tents that were put up in Trotter. So we're appreciative of the town for being able to take on those expenses. In addition, the town also has submitted to FEMA and has also used their CARES fund money for all of the staff and student screening that we did last year. So that was a, a big help to our fiscal budget as well. Most recently, we have expended our, we have fully expended our SR1 fund. So we are going to be receiving three SR funds. So there's SR1, SR2, and SR3. SR1, we had received last fall and it did have to be expended by September 30th of 2022. That amount was for $34,986. And that was used toward additional Chromebooks and teacher devices for this school year. This summer, we also applied for SR2 and that amount was for $135,238. And we do, we were successful in receiving those funds. $10,000 from this allocation must be utilized for student mental health supports. And so we are collectively working as a central office leadership team and also with our administrators to develop a plan for the use of those funds. And in October, we will be applying for the SR3 funds. Those total $281,464. 20% of these funds must be reserved to combat loss of learning and instructional time loss. The SR2 funds, we have until September 30th of 2023 to use. And the SR3 funds, we have until September 30th of 2024 to use. So those are all of the COVID-related grants that we have been eligible to receive and that we have, we intend to apply for or have applied for.
Questions on that? Oh, let's see, let's see, I gotta get over to my other screen. Kim?
Yep, I'm, I'm wondering if or when we're going to get an update of sort of the, the plans for these SR2 and 3. And if it, my understanding is that, like, the community should be involved?
Yeah, so we're, so Becky, we're, we're working on developing the plan for expanding SR3. We are working on developing a survey to get community input in terms of what the priorities of the community are in terms of how we can spend the funds. And the grant is actually due October, the end of October, Becky?
Yes, October 4, I believe, 4th now, end of year reports, October 1st. So we, yes, Kim, we are developing, we are working on a survey to go out to the community to help us inform this decision. And then once we are awarded the grant, then within 30 days, we actually have to publish how we intend to expend the funds under SR3. That is one of the requirements of the grant.
And 30 days after we receive the grant or after we apply?
After, after we receive notification that we have received it.
Do, on the grant application, do you have to break down like what in theory the plan is? Or is it sort of like you're applying for a lump of money?
No, we, we, whenever we're applying for any sort of funds, we do have to indicate how we intend to expend those funds. And so we have to develop a budget and that's usually done as a leadership team where we identify the needs, you know, of the district and long-term needs, obviously, because this money is good for the next few fiscal years.
And I'll just add that one of the challenges when you have an influx of, of money such as SR2 and SR3 is that it's great in the short term to have the money for a couple of years. But you can't build a budget around it. You can't, you can't purchase things that you want to sustain over a longer period of time such as new positions because eventually the money goes away. So it is something we're keeping a close, a watch on when we write the grant.
Thanks.
Other questions? All right, we've got fiscal year 23 budget priorities as the next line item. It's in the packet. There's, you know, quite a few bullets on this. This is something we have to vote at some point in time. I don't think we, but I, I don't think there's any particular reason to vote it tonight. Am I correct about that, Greg?
No, and I think, I think you're right, Roger.
I think it's some, I think, I think it's something that, that, well, let's, 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 I think there's two things here. I think it's something that folks should take a look at. This is something that we all want to sign our names to. And determine if, if people are comfortable with these, if they think that there's some things they'd like to add. If anybody wants to discuss any items tonight, we could put them up and talk about them. But I think we'll vote that at some other time. Katura?
I, I don't have anything to necessarily discuss. I'm just wondering if someone can refresh my recollection, which is that we made some significant revisions to these. Was that last year or the year before?
That was last year, Katura. Aligned the budget priorities to Vision 2026.
Okay.
So last year, well, it feels like many years ago, but it was, it was last year.
Well, I'm, I'm impressed that we did it last year. For sure, it must have been two years ago with everything else going on. But I was just trying to remember how recently we had updated them. So that's helpful. Thank you.
Anyone would like to discuss any tonight, we can. Otherwise, I'd like to encourage you to look at them and make sure you're in line with them or add anything at the next school committee when we will discuss it again. Okay. Next, we've got the fiscal year 23 budget calendar.
So just an overview of what we can anticipate in the next several months in terms of the budget process. And so just more for your information at this point in time. And Cheryl will keep that updated as we move through the budget process.
Questions at this point? Educational policy, there is none at this time. Policy development and distribution, there's none at this time. Personnel items.
So yes, so the human resources department under Heather's leadership has been extremely busy over the past 20 months. They're always busy, but I think over the past 20 months, they've been triple as busy. They've done a fabulous job and Heather will go over the personnel report and, and speak to some of the hiring trends that we're seeing.
Thank you, Greg. So, and as you can see in your packet tonight, there are four pages of employment-related, staffing-related transactions that, that have recently occurred. So a lot of these have happened from June, July, and August. So we have 31 new hires. You'll see 31 new hires there. That's a lot of new hires just in our district. And when I look at, you know, one of the things that I want to do is take a look at the resignations and why we're, why we have the new hires. And as I take a look at those, it's not concerning to me because a lot of the aides and ESPs are being hired as educators in other districts. So they are moving on for promotional reasons. So we've seen a lot of, a lot of teachers retire. So there's more of a need for educators in other districts as well. So when our ESPs have left, I, I don't see that. I see that as a good thing for them and us for to, us to train new ESPs internally. So at the 31 new hires do not include the new hires that we had that we did in the, for the ESY program. And when a new hire is hired and processed through human resources, we have the recruitment process, which takes a really long time. It can take a month or so of visibility to get a number of applicants. And then when we finally, the principals finally interview, and then when we hire someone, it takes three, at least three to five days. We have a stack of paperwork, about 20 pages or more long for the person to hire or complete before they're actually hired and start. So I just wanted to share that with all of this volume of hiring, not only in Southborough but supporting the other districts as well. I want to say a big thank you to Nina Wall and Elaine Chisholm in human resources because it has been a time like no other in human resources. So I think that one of the things that is really healthy for us is our, our compensation. We've got great compensation in the Town of Southborough, as Greg said earlier. We also are viewed as a destination district. So people who come here generally stay here. This is, this is an anomaly. This is not typically what happens. And I think this is just pandemic-related. One of the other things that's really attractive and is helpful to us is having a 75% health insurance contribution rate. That is something that really attracts new hires to our district. The other thing that I wanted to share was that having the building The other thing that I wanted to share was that having the building-based sub model that we implemented last year has been incredibly helpful um as far as us being able to hire and promote from the building-based subs into open positions. So that has been a form of recruitment for us. And so the other thing I want to share is with recruitment, we have had to use really creative strategies that um are new and different. Um, in addition to social media, traditional modes of advertising, there's a lot of networking that has really happened to recruit talented staff to our district. The other thing that I wanted to share that just happened last week is I think that it's really important when new hires come through to be able to reach out to them quickly. Um, one of the, one of the candidates that we were able to attract to our district rather than them going to another district was because I reached out to them personally very fast, very quickly. They had another offer on the table. And so that human connection, as well as the health insurance contribution rate and the salary, was able to attract that person to our district. So that's just one example of hiring strategies and making sure that we do it right within our district. So that's a little overview of hiring and recruitment for this year.
Um, huge, huge job, no question about it. Kamali, I see your hand up.
Yeah, that's, um, I I commend you, Heather and team for all the work that you've done. And I just wanted to ask, I feel like last year um we approved a system so that to help you with the HR process, there's a new um tool that you'd be using. And I wanted to know if that's in the, being implemented and how that's working for you so far.
So thank you for asking. In addition to all of the hiring and supporting employees, one of the other things that we've taken on is um is rolling out this new applicant tracking system. And one of the things that has to happen is the system has to be built behind the scenes. And so in the spare time, that's what we've been doing.
Of course, because this is my spare time. I understand.
So we've been building this system. Um, we just recently trained um trained principals and administrators on the system. I'm gonna be sending out another email to principals to allow them time to familiarize themselves with the system before we actually go live. So I wanted to get through the real hiring hurdle before we rolled out a new system.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kim?
Um, I have a quick question about substitutes. I know last year it was a struggle, right? Um, do, how is the pool looking for this year?
Yeah, I I think that um, Kim, some of the recruitment that we've done or that I've done for other positions has included substitutes in our advertising campaign. So I want to say that our substitute pool is is looking better. I have to add that the building-based substitute model is incredibly helpful to us. And so.
We have like a group at every school right now?
We do. We have um two, two building-based subs uh at the elementary schools and three at the, at the middle schools.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah. So I think it's better this year. Um, but I, you know, with with substitutes, oftentimes substitutes are looking for teaching positions. So if something comes up, we may have turnover in that area. So.
So is it, is the agreement like a month to month or like how do, how do we do that?
So we have the building-based subs and if they commit to us for three days a week, um, then they are paid at that, at a higher rate at a hundred and five dollars a day.
Okay.
And then we have the daily substitute pool as well.
Okay, that's like more traditional.
It is.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And I'll just add that this is where being uh multiple, multiple districts is beneficial because we can offer three days in one district and other days in another district. So it's for some, it's consistent, predictable substituting, which is always the case.
Other questions? Rather, okay. Well, thank you very much. As I said, huge job.
So just a general, general comment that it's um great to have an all-star HR team.
Sure.
There's ever a time where you need an all-star HR team, it's during a pandemic. You know, so Heather has done an outstanding job and as well as Elaine and Nina. So again, kudos to the team.
Thank you.
Um, next up is communications.
So back to school newsletter um is in your packet. And then the MASC, MASS joint conference is scheduled for November third through the sixth. Um, so if you have not registered, it's not too late. You can reach out to Cheryl and she can take care of registration. Um, and also at the October meeting, we'll need to vote, uh, voting delegate um for the conference.
Okay, questions? Um, all right, next up is um, we've got one meeting. The minutes for which we need to vote to approve, it's the uh June ninth meeting. Which was a virtual meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the Southborough School Committee minutes for the open meeting on Wednesday, June ninth, two thousand twenty one. They're so moved?
So moved.
Uh, so moved by Kim. Is there a second?
Second, Kamali.
Kamali, getting all choked up about these minutes. Anybody have any issues with the minutes? Okay, roll call vote. Katura?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Kamali?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's approved unanimously. Um, so um, I think we're there. We've got the bills and payroll line item. Jen items for next month. I think we discussed that we were going to add an update on the uh before and after school study. Uh, maybe have that be a part of the agenda. I think we're going to um uh see where we are on the subcommittee assignments. Um, and I guess um hopefully folks will have taken a look at the budget priorities to see if uh anybody'd like to propose any changes to that. Um, anything else that anyone can think of now, obviously?
Maybe an update on on transportation?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I think I was talking when you were talking. What?
Maybe an update on transportation?
Oh, for sure. Um, I think also, y- you know, I um and excuse the principals before I had a second chance to commend them on the um, you know, school openings. But um we're pretty early on, you know, just a few days in. And uh, so there's certainly a, unfortunately, an opportunity for the, for the shine to go off the apple, you know, once we get into it. So um, I I presume this would happen, but sort of a, um, kind of an update on uh, on that first month. Because uh, you know, we're now, we're now big change, right? We're now uh, uh, in person. So um, um, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna see some things. Hopefully all good, but we're gonna see some things. Um, other, other agenda items people would like to suggest? And uh.
Oh, can I say something that um?
Sure.
That what you just said about the first month, like it was really intriguing to me what Gary said about really looking at like the learning from what happened during the pandemic. I would like, love to hear about some of the things that are changed, sort of like out of the box because we've learned it in this like weird situation, like a little positive spin to some of this. I don't know if it needs to be a presentation, but I would love to hear like some of those things.
The only other thing I would add, Roger, is um world language update from Mary School. I'm not sure if it's next month, but in the next, you know, either October, November.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
But Kim, we could also add, we could leave that in. I think it's a good point and it is conversations we're having as a leadership team around, you know, what, what are the practices we want to endure that we've learned from pandemic?
Um, I'm also gonna put out there too that uh we had yesterday morning, Greg and Keith and I were in a meeting. The uh capital planning committee, no, subcommittee, schools research subcommittee, whatever. It's a very long name. So we had one of those meetings and um, and we discussed. So, so we're gonna have some demographic information coming up and some um, the study that or the internal analysis that Greg referenced earlier about um using, using the buildings and configuring grades and how much space and all of that. And we discussed uh whether it would make sense to present all of that or to discuss all of that in our regular meeting or maybe schedule something else. Maybe a special meeting since that's kind of a distinct topic and fairly detailed where I think there's probably gonna be a fair amount of analysis. So um, I just wanted to make the committee aware of that and mention it so that we can think about if we want to include it in the, in the regular meeting or if we want to schedule a different meeting. But I'm just putting it out there so everyone is aware.
Katura, do you think so? So there's more data being gathered, right, as far as analysis? Timeframe as far as uh kind of that gap, data gathering process? And then I guess it would have to, has to be organized uh to be able to present it anyway, so.
I'm gonna guess late this fall, like I'm gonna say in a couple of months, probably. Greg, what do you think?
No, I agree. I think what we can expect, the demographic report um at the end of this month, um, we'll have our internal um space need study done by the end of this month. So um, late October, early November.
Okay. Makes sense. And I guess we'll try to figure out whether we can weave that into a meeting or whether we need a special meeting to review it. Anything else before we go to audience sharing? All right, going once, twice. We will move on to audience sharing. And it looks like uh, I see Dave with his hand up. How do we bring him in to the sharing?
He is now a panelist.
Welcome, David.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm not visible. I don't know why, but um I just, I don't want to delay the end of this meeting for any of you. Um, but I want to give a huge shout out. First of all, we could thank everyone in this district for everything that we've done over the past couple of years to make it through this. Um, but I want to give a special shout out to the custodial staff. The buildings looked phenomenal this year. They always do, but you know, they had a special shine on them this year. And as well to Mary Ellen and the nursing staff. Tremendous amount of thank yous. Go out to all of you for keeping us all safe and for all the hard work that you're doing. So thank you so much.
I think, I think that's a here, here and a here, here. Thank you, David. I don't see anyone else's hand up. So um, thank you all. And we'll see you next meeting. I did see the note on the um, I, by the way, I did see the note on the um, the um, the warrants, the payroll warrants. So uh, I'll take a look at my email after this. I'm sure Katura will also. All right, thank you, everyone.
Do we make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. Who would like to do that?
I'll do it. I'll move to adjourn.
And I'll second it.
So motion to adjourn made by Katura. Um, seconded by Kamali.
By Kim.
By Kim. As you can see, I'm already to adjourn, probably ready to adjourn a while ago. It's not, uh, it's not debatable. Rule, call, vote. Katura?
Uh, yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we adjourned at nine thirty seven PM.
Awesome.